So we're all set, we'll call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, December 20, last meeting before the holidays and then the year. So we have our first item, this is a resolution. This is on Goodsite 637 Bridges and 4 of Inningwood Road. This was an application for a true removal permit. So we had a public hearing last time around, we closed that public hearing. We asked staff to put together a resolution based on the conversations that we had there. I think the legal teams worked on this and came up with some language that makes good sense that I think was acceptable to both sides. So Brad, are you okay with the resolution as it's currently drawn up at this point?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
All set, okay. I hope the applicators also at this point is all set. Any questions or thoughts on the resolution as it's been presented and drawn up? Okay. If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as drawn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? None, so the resolution's all set. Much earlier night than the last time.
How long is the next one gonna go?
The next one, application?
Yeah.
You wanna just practice or something? No, no, not really.
Thank you guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Okay, our next item is an informal appearance continuing for the board. This is the Midas Main Street Lot Corp., 90 Inningwood Road. An application for a site development plan, steep slopes and tree removal permit. So it might be helpful, Jennifer, are you there? I don't see, I see you.
Yes, I am here. I'm sorry, I'm in the car, we'll be home shortly, but I am here.
Okay, well drive carefully.
Thank you. The wonders of technology these days.
I guess. Do you wanna just bring us up to date on, you know, our thoughts on the application at this point?
Yeah, I'll just share that I did receive the title report, the title search that was submitted by the applicant. What I had requested, what I think the board requested was a title opinion, so not just a recitation of, you know, the themes that are applicable to the searched property, but an opinion from the title company as to the current owner. It's based on the title search, it looks like the current owner is the town of Newcastle, but it would be good to have a title opinion. The state of New York, right, not the town of Newcastle.
Yeah.
But it would be good to have an opinion of the title company, you know, confirming that, rather than just reciting the facts.
Right, I think also, Jennifer, we also saw that on the Westchester GIS maps that it looked as though that those parcels were also owned by the state of New York.
Yeah, yeah, the Westchester County GIS does indicate that those parcels that make up Inningwood Road and that location are owned by the state of New York. So all signs are pointing towards that ownership. It would be good for the record to have an opinion of the title company confirming that. And I think that it's, you know, I think this is what you're getting at next. I think it's important before the planning board moves forward with really opining on, you know, alternative designs, to understand what the state will or will not accept as far as improvements within that right of way. So we know the parameters within which that we're working.
Yeah, I, you know, we were hoping frankly, at least I was hoping that the property would be found and be owned by the town and then we could work with the town and work out the arrangements. But as I understand it, some of the property that the applicant proposes to cross is as much as 90 or 70 feet depending upon the crossing. So it's not inconsequential. I don't think it's necessarily slammed up that the state will just go along with whatever is going, is being proposed here. And then we also find that we have stormwater, by some, at least part of the stormwater, I think, some of the utilities are proposed to be within the state property. That's gotta be cleared. It's, you know, we've been asking for this for a long time, this is the reason. And I fear that if we frankly move forward and we don't wanna waste the applicant's time and money, at this point, I think it's really incumbent upon the applicant to verify and clearly show who owns the property, if it is New York State, find that. And then, you know, New York State's gonna, they're gonna be looking at this and they're gonna have something to say, yea, nay, or in between. And I think it's kinda crazy for us to move forward when there's so much impact on so much state property here. Believe it or not, apparently there's a notch of this property that actually does front on Summers Town Road, Route 100 down toward the bottom. Probably that was set up by the state when they forced to carve the ways of property to build the road. You know, there might be some egress there. I, the whole thing is kind of crazy at this point because we're going on certain suppositions and I think it's, I personally just think it's not a good use of our time at this point until we have information from the state. Bob Seoli's note articulates a couple of things that they would absolutely have to be obtained from the state in terms of permits, easements, et cetera. And I really think it would be in everyone's best interest if the applicant pursues that with the state once they confirm the fact that this is state property and that it's a state and I'm not, who knows what the property have to deal with. The DOT, I know Bob mentions in his memo that it's a DOT. I suppose that's who it is, but who knows if it, I trust it's not a parkland setback or something like this. But there's information here that really needs to have been provided a long time ago and we've been asking for it for, I mean, literally months. We still don't really have it. We have a supposition, but we really need hard facts. And it seems to me that we really need to get the input from the state in terms of what they wanna see or what they're going to permit before we do a whole lot more of this.
So can I ask a question about that? I agree with everything you're saying, but the question that I think then presents itself is what, because there is an alternative study here for another alternative driveway access to the property. And so if, in the eventuality that we believe that we need to hear from the state first, what does the applicant take to the state for their review? There is this complete set of, well not complete, but this set of drawings which pretty much describes the impact of the state right of way. And then there is essentially a sketch plan, it's on my computer, essentially a sketch plan. It presents an alternative. And does, what does the applicant do in this, in this case?
I would suggest that the applicant present both proposals and I, I've had some conversations behind the scene on this. What the applicant hasn't done at this point is to bring any of this to the finish line, even in terms of the proposals. When you're doing this comparison, what I think would be very helpful for the state and I think for also us is when you lay out these proposals, and they look at them and tweak them et cetera, but at some point, they should be able to tell, what's the delta in terms of steep slopes between the two proposals? What's the delta on the sightlines, which is better, which is worse? Which is better in terms of slope, which is better in terms of trees? What are the impacts? And yet that hasn't been quantified to, we can sit there and say, you know, on a quantification basis, you know, one is better than the other. One can be better and one is better. So I would suggest that that would be something that the applicant ought to do for fear that if they look at just the proposed, the preferred application and for some reason if the state says, no, we don't like that, turn it down, then we have nothing to go with and they have to start over again.
Also, just a question, are they gonna need a permanent easement, a wholly state property?
Oh yeah, some sort of easement.
So that to me in and of itself is almost sort of precedes the design question.
Yes.
Right, there's sort of a threshold question about whether the state even is willing to entertain.
Correct.
I understand what you're saying, but in order for the state, I would think to.
They should have to show them something.
Yeah, they gotta know what the easement's for.
A hundred, I completely agree.
And where it is and what's involved and the impacts and so on.
The only reason I raised it.
Must have been designed for that.
Yes, the only reason I raised it is just to further agree with Bob that we have no idea what the state's gonna say. And so for us to, I agree that, I think what you're suggesting is we sort of table this until the state gets involved.
I'm suggesting that, well, okay, so I'm not, maybe we ought to reconsider that because it seems to me that we, if you take the state, put them aside, right, for a moment, we have yet to come to, I think, any conclusions about where the driveway cut.
Right, we've been back and forth on this for a long time.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
And so as a consequence, if we step back and the applicant goes to the state, right, and gets their review about what they are willing or not willing to do, he still has to come back to us for argument. And we may not agree with the state. I mean, I, it seems to me that, I mean, the state says no, the state says no. But if the state says yes, you can put it here, but we prefer it over here. The applicant is, is like.
So it's a chicken and egg situation a little bit. What's, I.
I'm not sure it's a chicken and egg situation so much as it is, yet as it is. If this alternative gets developed to the point where there's enough information for our purposes to come to some judgment about what we prefer.
Sure.
Then there's material to go to the state and let them weigh in. I mean, that's another way to do it.
Yeah, and I think to a certain extent, Bob's memo does a lot of the work for the applicant and is summarizing in some areas what, at least from his standpoint, without actually taking an absolute, you know, position on this and saying, this is what, this is the preferred position, preferred proposal. But he's articulated, you know, he's compared the sightlines and some of the problems with the sightlines and the alternative. This whole thing with an alternative driveway, even if this is the preferred one, what are we going to do with this driveway? What are we going to do in terms of servicing the septics and pumping up there in the future? Certainly where the tank's going to be put so that they can be accessed from, I guess, the driveway or whatever. So all those kinds of things need to be thought of. I understand what you're saying, Tom, but I think to a certain extent, I don't know if we really should be planning that for the applicant. I think Bob has given them an awful lot of information that he's worked on, on his own and provided that in his memo and saying, look, this is what the slope is, this is what our rule is on slope. I think the, he thinks that the cut here would be a little bit difficult for sightlines, you know, this one down here lower because the rock has to be cut even further. So I mean.
Well, the question, the question, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but seems to me the question is, it's the applicant's initiative to take this to the state, right? It's also the applicant's choice what to take to the state. And the applicant may not agree with the alternative. And as a consequence, the alternative never gets reviewed by the state. And the applicant comes back with a state response to this, to the original proposal, and we decide that we don't like that, we prefer the other proposal.
So I mean, that would be something that the applicant would do at their risk. I would, I guess I would urge the applicant to send, you know, give both proposals full ride and full attention as they've done here to a certain degree. I think it's a bona fide attempt. I mean, we've seen a lot of straw dogs over the years and I think the applicant should be applauded for what they've really done here.
So I agree that both options ought to get a view by the state.
Yeah, exactly.
And my only question is, is this option developed then, is this option developed enough for our purposes, maybe it doesn't have to be for our purposes, but for the state purposes to understand what this implies and entails?
I suspect it hasn't been because obviously stormwater hasn't been done, I don't think for that proposal to the degree of the other. My personal opinion is I was reading through Bob's memo and I see that, you know, we're at 16.7%, the max is 16%. It seems probably in some way, somewhere that can be tweaked to get it within the 16.
Yeah.
Without horrible difficulty.
None.
And so I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I think the sightlines are really important on this road for whichever proposal, you know, works out.
So do we, I'm just trying to avoid, because we know what it's like to deal with the state, right?
I'm curious to know what that is, like what is that process?
It's a brutal, can be brutal and long and not always had clarity attached to it.
Yes, that's a very good way of putting it.
So I hesitant to, to end up in a situation where the applicant is put in front of the state in a way that creates more confusion and noise in the conversation with them. I think clarity would be the best thing to do in that case. And so to me, clarity would be go to them once, go to them with what you want to do, right? And go from there. And if, if we think, if we want to direct the client, the applicant, to the alternative proposal because in our judgment, that is the best site plan for what our responsibilities entail, then we should tell them now, I think. And, and to help sort of facilitate the process of clarity as they go through to the state instead of having them come back and then say, oh, well, we don't want that.
So I see both sides to it and I defer, I have very little experience with the state. And so I defer to you both to decide. I have no problem continuing your discussion now. I don't think it's a waste of time. And maybe this is a horrible, sorry, maybe this is a horrible suggestion, but I'd be curious, I'm not saying that we have to weigh it necessarily, but I'd be curious what the, if the applicant has a preference, if we spend more time on the application here or just tell them to go to the state and figure it out and then come back to us, not have to take their.
Or give them some input as to this, this, and this should be looked into. And either they come back and show it to us or go directly to the state, but at least we've given them all the input so that they, they have the ability to build it to the full extent.
Yeah, I think, maybe Bob, you can weigh in on this, but I think Bob has given us a lot of that input. I mean, I think he probably has his druthers. I think the applicant has indicated that the initial proposal is their preferred proposal.
That's correct, yeah, yeah. Because just because even the testing, we tested the entire site and we have very, you know, the areas of showing stormwater and the area of the septic, we can't really deviate from that. And in order to get up the hill with that alternative, it causes us to lose most of that area.
Which area, the septic you're saying?
Yeah, the original stormwater areas where we show our designed stormwater on the preferred layout, the original layout. A lot of that driveway encroaches onto those areas.
Oh, okay, I didn't follow it, but if you say so, I'm sure that's the case.
Now Bob, if you'd like, I can go over the, just those two areas where I looked at two specific items for the alternate driveway. Thank you, Chairman. I mean, basically I looked at it under AD1 and AD2 under alternate driveway comments. And what I did was I just did a quick, dirty analysis on the two things I always look at, which is a deciding factor as on whether driveway is gonna be good or not. AD1, the average driveway grade is about 14.2%. Now really all I did was you get the elevation to the edge of the pavement of Inningwood Drive, you get the elevation of the garage slab and you divide them out. Obviously it's simple mathematics and it's about, maximum driveway grade is 16.7 and the average is 14.2. However, that doesn't take into account all the other items you need to put in to meet the code. So the maximum driveway grade is about 16.7. To Bob's point before, could you tweak it to get it down to 16? Yes, do I, me as a town engineer, do I like to see it 16? Would you get it down to something as lower as the preferred? I like to see it less than that, like 14 ideally. So those are my comments for AD1. And then on the preferred driveway, again, you can see the average grade is 9.3. It's much less. And then you can see when you actually have the pavement grade, which is the actual driveway grade the car would be driving on, it's about 14%. To me, that's a pretty significant decrease. So the preferred driveway in that, I would think wins. On AD2, I looked at the sightlines and the impacts and the amount of cut to the rock. For the alternate driveway, the maximum distance, which basically where you're gonna measure in from the edge of the road, which is Inningwood, back to where the sightline distance is at its apex, its most, is about 40 feet. Now the problem you have with the alternate driveway is that elevation it comes out is down the road. It says an elevation about 402, 403. But you're looking up the hill, you should need the 395 for the sightline. So when you're looking up that hill, you're looking at rock that's at elevations 450, 460, 465. That's a lot of rock elevation to pick up and you can't because it's just a low elevation for the driveway coming out on the road. So you're looking at a rock cut of about 24 feet. That's quite a bit of rock to cut. On the preferred driveway, where the driveway comes out at a much higher elevation on the road, you're looking up the sightlines 395, which is required based on the study they did by Colliers Engineering, the distance in from the edge of the pavement to where the sightline is at 30 feet, so it's a 10 foot less. But the maximum rock cut is only 10 feet. So, you know, and those two instances, based on the driveway grade, maximum grade, sightline, rock removal, sightline distance, preferred driveway wins out in these two instances. Now, from an environmental standpoint, they didn't quantify the rock, they didn't quantify the trees to be removed, they didn't quantify the steep slopes, which is always an environmental issue which everyone looks at and balance these things. I did not look at that. I looked at these two specific things just to give the applicant and the planning board just some general idea of which one might be more favorable based on those two criteria.
Some alternate site, the tree removal, at least that seems to be a plan.
Yeah.
If that makes any sense.
No, it's a fair argument. So, so Bob, thank you for that. I guess in the alternate, it has not yet been developed enough so that we under, have a good read on things like sightlines and the extent to which you'd have to do the cut along the roadway.
Oh yeah, of course, they didn't do the same analysis they did on the preferred driveway with the sightline and the actual cut. I did it based on the information I know that we need for the sightlines, which is about 395, because that gradient coming down that road, Inningwood, is pretty much all consistent. So you can assume within reason that the sightlines are gonna be the same there as they are where the preferred layout is, which is about 395 feet looking left when you're coming out of the driveway.
So I guess the question is, if you look at, and what's also not developed in the alternative is in our work on the original driveway, we had asked for some retaining walls to be put in in order to mitigate for some of the steep cuts that would be, that would be done there. None of that has been looked at in the alternative as options to sort of mitigate for the steep cuts there. So we don't have an apples to apples comparison.
That is correct, that is correct. And to Bob's point, they didn't do an analysis for the tree removal and they did not do the steep slopes analysis as well on the alternative.
So where do we go from here? So Bob, with respect to the, working with the state on this, do you have some intuition about, or some recommendation about how they ought to be approached with one scheme?
I would, I would recommend they reach out to Anne Dorelius. Every project I do with the town of Newcastle, no matter on the magnitude, the extent, the first thing that you really have to do is get a New York State Highway Work Permit. And the person that I reach out to all the time is Anne Dorelius. She's a PE, she's a permit engineer with the state up in Katona. She's the one to reach out the first because she's the one that's liaison with the state and she will send all of the plans to different agencies up in Burnett Boulevard. They'll send it to the Geotech Division, they'll send it to the Drainage Division, they'll send it to the Traffic and Safety Division and probably even the Real Estate Division to get the easements. She is the main contact to start the ball rolling on this. That's what I would recommend. And I'd also recommend that when they do deal with Anne Dorelius, they keep me in the loop every inch of the way so we kinda know what they need, what they're looking for and what the status is on this project. We've done it in other projects, it seems to work out pretty good. I have a very good professional relationship with her, that's what I would recommend.
So in, in the case of this project, what would we send them?
I think what we, I think what we have here, you know, they're gonna look at that. I mean, you know, I know in dealing with the state, they are very big on having, I don't wanna put a kibosh to this, but I know they're very big on not having two curb cuts. You know, when you have one driveway, one residence, they like to see one driveway curb cut. Their main thing is, you know, safety along those roads. I can't speak for them, but in my experience, that's kinda their mindset sometimes. I think the plans we have developed, there's a lot of information to give them to make a determination on what needs to be done. It shows all the improvements in the right of way, the stormwater, the curb cut, the landscape and the plantings, the stone line swale, the head wall, the piping. That's all gotta be looked at by the state. They're gonna scrutinize, they're gonna scrutinize a stormwater report too because they wanna make certain there's no more water coming off that side as well, so.
I just wanna be clear, all that detail you just cited is in the preferred alternative. Would we be sending them the alternative two or DV or whatever we're calling it also for their consideration?
We are not sending them anything, it's up to the applicant to send it to them.
Yeah, the applicant will, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think they're gonna look at it and, you know, they have my memo they can look at too. I did a quick, dirty analysis and the state's gonna look at this. Believe you me, they're not shy about asking what they need. If they need more information on that alternate driveway, they'll certainly ask for it, believe you me.
I just don't want to get lost.
Yeah, right.
Come back and we're a damn strong, right?
Well, there's one big advantage with the alternate proposal and that is one cut. Right, so I think that's huge. I mean, you can, you know, I don't understand sightlines et cetera, but, you know, we said, I think one of the statements we made a long time ago was, we understand the special need here, the special conditions, but for the most part, we never have two road cuts for, you know, a single residential development. Just don't. And I don't know what the state's going to read on this, but that certainly is one big advantage of the other because they need this other cut to access the septic and the sewage and just to construct the building, as I understand it. So it's, that's a tough one.
I think Tom's point, which I'm coming around to slowly, you know, I'm slow, is, is a good one and that, the point I think is that if, if, if if we're saying to the applicant, you need to go talk to the state, which clearly the applicant does need to do. If you're going with two options, they should be equally developed. They are two very different options. We have talked a lot about this project, trying to do what's best for the applicant, for the town, genuinely weighing all the positives and negatives of the proposals and the alternatives. But now, if it now, only now realizing that it needs to go to the state, it just feels like sending, you know, allowing it to move forward with the two proposals as they stand, one of them is a little bit of a, I mean, we'll see what the state has to say, but what, you know, one of them is a little bit of a strong man, as you were saying. Like this alternate, alternative proposal is not sufficiently thought out.
At least from what Bob's saying, that you have enough to get there because they're gonna have a lot of input.
Yeah, and that's, that's okay if they actually ask for that input, but I think to Tom's point, again, I think, by the way, as you do that comparative chart, I think as you go through trees and steep slopes and height and view and sightlines et cetera, I mean, I think also, you know, number of cuts, one, number of cuts, two. I mean, that's, that's important on that chart too. Is it determinative? No, I don't think so, but it's certainly something that has to be balanced. So I would, I would think.
It's getting closer. I mean, you can see the profiles.
I really thought that the alternate driveway was going to be way out of whack, frankly, over the 16%. I thought, I mean, I was led to believe that it's ruined just a notch farther. So when I saw a 16.7, I said, well, that's close enough, we can tweak it. And to Bob's point, I know he would prefer 14, but I bet there's a way if you get to 14 and a half, 15, you know, with a couple, you know, curves and working, I think frankly, a little bit better with these slopes.
Well, you could get to 16% by just dropping the house a foot.
Correct, correct.
Or dropping the garage, you know, instead of one step up to the house, two steps up to the house.
Yep, absolutely, correct.
So it's not a problem.
That's right. Good point, that's a very good point.
So, all right, so here's what I'm a little concerned about is that if we have, if we actually have a preference, a strong preference for one scheme versus another and we send both to the state for them to review, let's remember they're a supernumerary. and we send both to the state for them to review, let's remember they're a supernumerary organization. They come back and they say, well, we prefer actually the one that you guys don't prefer because you gave us a choice. What position does that put us in with respect to how we manage the next step in the process, which is to tell the applicant, well, maybe the state likes it, but we don't like it.
Can I just add something really quick? I, you know, just this, this, you know, this, this other access was really, like I said, originally meant just to get the machine in there, clean the rock up, restore, never use it again. I mean, does it help our position if we just remove it altogether?
What?
Yeah, the construction access that we have shown on our preferred layout.
No, I understand, but I don't understand the logic of that. That's all.
Well, because it's, it seems to be creating, you know, a big problem with two curb cuts. And really, like I said, the only reason we had that shown on our option was to get, you know, machines up in there just to start the rock tripping and restore that entrance. I'm just wondering is if, if we completely get rid of that now, now we're dealing with one curb cut. Does it help our preferred plan? Because we're, I mean, we prefer the plan that's, you know, we developed, you know, the other plan we were not crazy about, we were showing another option. And, you know, the other thing that concerns me about that other plan is we're now entering on a curve of a road when people are coming down. So I just wanted to add that, you know, just to see if that helps.
These, uh, locations.
Actually see less of a curve on the first option.
Yeah, there, there's a curve there. We, we've been there, so.
I live there.
So it's, it's a tough curve.
So if you're gonna, we agree that one driveway is better and I think that where we may be heading is if you're going to take one driveway out, it should probably be the original proposal. Uh, but yeah, with respect to coming to a conclusion that has the, the data points and the metrics that we always try and make sure we're, we're being careful about. We don't yet have the information that, you know, Bob has talked about is not, um, you know, Bob Kirkwood and Bob Cioli have both said, there's some more work to be done here for us to give a fair analysis of the alternative. In order, I think, the right thing to do is for is to, is to find the right one to take to the state and not put them in a position of making a decision for us. Because their concerns are not entirely the same, nor do they embrace all of our concerns.
So the applicant prefers the first one? Is that what we're hearing?
I mean, I, 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 the answer to the first question you posed, Tom, is if the state came back with something that, you know, was not our preferred, um, you know, I think it would still be incumbent upon us to try to figure out a way to accommodate the, uh, the applicant and approve somehow, some way. I, I, as much as, you know, I, I've looked at this alternative and when we walked out there on the site, it was not just for the machinery, but, uh, my impression when I was walking out there was that was really a realistic alternative that presented some environmental savings. Um, and I remain concerned with, um, you know, uh, again, the, the quantification. I mean, with all these walls that are being developed along the western side of the property along the preferred driveway, we, we would, I, you know, we don't know what we'd have, but it's, it's, it's really substantial. So, um,
I have a, I have a question.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, Anthony, um, it, are you going to put mirrors, you know, where the, the driveway hits the, the, um, the road uh, in your preferred option? Because if you had a mirror that could show you what's likely coming at you from uphill, I would think that would.
A dick? Can I say one thing? The state does not allow mirrors. They do not allow mirrors. Absolutely not. The town nor the state. Yeah.
Do, with, do we need to send a list to where some of them still exist? Where they grandfathered?
I spoke to Andy Relius all the time. Uh, people try to do it on just, you know, building permits and and the state's policy is, uh, they do not allow mirrors anymore, anymore at all.
That's why the sightlines were cutting it so you could actually see and not have to rely on mirrors. Yeah, that's what that rock cut is.
Rock's tall.
So, so the more we talk about it, the, the more convinced I am that, that we should figure out what, what we, absent the state, we should, uh, the, we should determine what we think makes sense, what we would approve, where the state not in question. And then, um, you know, we've sort of come this far. You know, we asked for this alter- Bob, you asked for this alternative. Um, it's interesting. We should learn more about it, see if it is preferable for us and then make a recommendation that, uh, that's what the applicant goes to the state with.
I guess we could, we could ask the applicant to, to, you know, fill this out, right? And, uh, study this fully as I've done on the preferred. Then we can have that information and then we could make a recommendation for one of the two as I go to the state. It's going to take a little bit more time for the applicant.
I still don't know why we're sending two to the state. I mean, applicants have what they like, but I'm sorry. So if there is a, if, if there is a, uh, an application, a, a site plan, right? That we prefer, we ought to be promoting that site plan as the submission for this application. And that would be the application that then goes forward, not just to the state, but the county and to everybody else.
No, I understand.
Having, you know, these two alternatives.
I understand that, but I don't, I don't have enough, from my standpoint, I don't have enough information on this alternative, which I think is a realistic alternative.
I'm not suggesting we don't get it. I'm saying we should get it.
And then at that point, we would make a determination, this is our preference along with the.
Before it goes to the state.
Exactly. If they, if they want to do that, if they want it within that process. Exactly.
The application we want to see, we may want to see, may be an application of one curb cut, which is the alternative B.
Exactly, exactly right. Thank you. So, I mean, I, I know it's, it's, it's imposing more time and work on the applicant, but the applicant can, I suppose, can go directly to the state and do what they want with the state or, or go to the state and also come back to us in the meantime and we can look at, uh, the, the alternative and, and flesh it out. And maybe during the, the course of the review by the state, they're not real fast on these, so I think there's time. We could actually, uh, send them some information about a preference. Uh, I, I don't think this is going to be a turnaround time where they're, they're finished and, and.
I also don't think this necessarily adds more time for the applicant. If we were going to ask for this anyway, um, then.
That's a good point, Alan.
You know, I, I don't think that we're being un- you know, unnecessarily harsh on the applicant. This is something that we, we, we asked for this alternative. We're going to work with it and ask more questions and ask for it to be better fleshed out anyway, I'm sure. And, uh, this, you know, this might even speed the process along.
It just runs us into a jam because like I mentioned, there's no area to really, you know, treat the stormwater.
With the option, option two. Option one has the space. It, it sounds to me like there's too many impediments on the, the, uh, the new one that was just proposed. And I would think it would speed things along if we just send one to the state and take a vote and see if we like the existing one well enough, uh, or not. If we like it, uh, well enough, then get the state looking at it. And they can come back and say, well, we don't like where the, uh, how much rock is left at the roadside or things like that. We'll see what they come back with and the applicant then can deal with that perhaps. And if not, it gets prolonged if they can, they can really fill out in the meantime while the first option that we like right now and goes forward. Will they be able to, uh, you know, use that time to fill out, uh, all the things we need on option two? So.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I mean, this is not my area, of course. This is up to Bob and the engineers, but I, I, I don't follow the statement how it's going to impact the stormwater, but, um.
If you notice on the, uh, the, the preferred plan, we have that stormwater treatment area that's up top. It's, um, uh, we're going right over that with that, with that new driveway to get up there, just to.
So move it. Is that the only place on the site that those, uh, cold tech units can go?
Yeah, just take other, there's no other deep test hole areas you can take to, uh, Tom's point to find another location. I mean, that's a pretty good sized site.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, all of our data, it pretty much shows anywhere where we can drain to. We have those areas shown now. Uh, and everything else is also pretty steep.
Well, I mean, to demonstrate to the board that it's not feasible.
Up, Anthony.
Yeah.
I mean, I would recommend you show where you took the deeps and if the good, best deeps and perks are right where the new driveway is, that would demonstrate to the board that maybe it's not a good spot. But if you don't show that, they're not going to know regardless.
Yeah, I mean, this is the area we have, this area over here, and then here's the septic.
Yeah, but you're going to have, if, if that's, if the alternate B is preferred, then you're going to have this whole area that's going to be undisturbed and available. That's good soil out there. We walked it. I mean, it's going to be all disturbed with this, this plan, but there's, there's probably some area in that, uh, that area that you can, you know, take care of stormwater.
Run a lateral over there. It's actually downhill, I think. No, it's not. It could be.
This is shallow groundwater, so these are actually more shallower units. I'm not groundwater, uh, that's shallow rock. That's why these, these units are shallow. These are the ones we have the depth on.
So, um.
So now I'd have to try to maximize in an area, you know, where we have shallow. I'd have to re- look at all the, uh, the past data, but that's from our field inspectors, that's the results they were getting.
No, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and as, again, a point of question, a point of interest from my standpoint, um, if you had the preferred plan, that's approved. Where, how would you service the, uh, septic area? I would imagine the county would probably request you to build out the expansion. But where are the tanks and where would they be pumped from?
Thanks, sir.
What's that?
Uh, tanks right here where I'm showing my, uh, my little hand here.
Go around behind the house, okay.
Yeah, a little tube, or you could probably get to here and then run a hose if you had to pump it out. This is all flat up in here.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and then run a hose if you had to pump it out.
I'm, I'm sure it's, it's, I'm sure it's doable, so I understand.
So, um, if, if I could make a suggestion, I, you know, this is one of these cases where I, I believe that if the alternative driveway, which we're, uh, I actually didn't think it was going to work and, um, I was surprised to see that it's so close to sixteen percent, which still is maybe makes, um, our town engineer, Bob Cioli, a little uncomfortable, but it might be within the realm of, uh, something which is doable and acceptable. If you massage the elevation of the house itself by a foot or two, that it's actually, that it actually works from, uh, from that point of view. And so the question I would ask is, if, if you never had the opportunity to, for whatever reason, to do driveway, the preferred driveway, and this was the only driveway that you had, the only access you could possibly get, would you not develop the property? Could you not develop the property?
It, it kind of takes me back to the original design where we were getting a little bit of, uh, backlash on the steep slopes of that driveway when it was sixteen percent. So now we're, you know, getting pushed down there and we're going back to the steep driveway. It's also, you know, sixteen percent driveways, you know, for a homeowner, you probably don't want to, you know, you would want that either, sixteen percent driveway, especially with our winters, the way they are. So the less, the better.
Yeah, so, you know, the answer.
You have children. You, you don't want sixteen percent because they'll be riding things down and crashing and everything else.
And then we're getting into guide rails with that, with that layout and it kind of snowballs into all this, you know, safety issues. And plus, you know, the vertical curves, like Bob was saying, there are some other, you know, things we have to add to that profile.
Okay, so this, this whole, um, conversation, this whole point of view that you're, um, promoting here is predicated on the particular design of the house itself. If you have a steep slope here and what you're essentially proposing is a typical sort of track style, developer style home with a, you know, a basement and a, you know, it, it, it's a box that, that wants to be on a flat piece of ground. And if, if, if it seems to me that if the steep driveway is a concern, one might actually, if it turned out that you couldn't get anything other than this entrance to the property, you wouldn't, I don't know, I'm not sure that you'd walk away from the property. You might instead decide, well, let's see if we can design a house that works for this, for this land asset here that we can, you know, make some money on. Instead of saying, well, we've decided it has to be this kind of house, therefore it drives every other decision on the site. And it's easy to do when you have a flat site or a gently sloping site, but this site is not amenable to that kind of, of, of architectural solution. Site plan solution, it seems to me. So I would say it's up, it would be up to you to figure out. We're not saying you can't put a house here. I mean, we're encouraging you to put a house here. We're encouraging you to put a house here which, which works from the point of view of the sorts of things that we have to worry about and be concerned about. Now, I'm not suggesting that you have to change the house, but, uh, you know, maybe the, you know, now we're saying sixteen percent is too much for X, Y, and Z for the future tenant. Okay, that's your decision. That's not ours. It's, it's, if Bob Cioli says it's an acceptable grade, then I think it would be for me, for my purposes, it's an acceptable grade.
Yes, that is an maximum grade based on chapter sixty-four, twenty F eight, yes.
Right, but again, uh, you know, um, it's balancing a number of factors, you know, obviously we don't like to see sixteen percent, but it's something that, uh, will work and make this house work and then also help us in other areas with some of the other cut and fill, the rock walls and the sightlines and, and slopes and, and trees, et cetera, and, and number of cuts, uh, maybe, maybe we have to live with that. Obviously, this is going to be a compromise balancing act here. This, this is
a tough site.
Very, very tough site, very difficult.
Really tough.
Um, you know, that's all that's left in, 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 in our town to a certain degree is these really tough sites. And we have regulations that we have to abide by and, um, it's, it's, you know, I, I'm sympathetic to the applicant. I hate this feeling that we're just horsing them around, but I, I, I agree with Tom. I thought that the alternative was just going to be a nonstarter. And, uh, I, I was expecting someone's going to come back with twenty, twenty-one percent. That's, it doesn't work. Okay, fine, that's gone. But this is, um, this is something I think actually is interesting. Uh, I think it, it could work. And I think it could work as well or perhaps better than the other, but I don't have, I don't want to make that, uh, the, the determination and send it to the state with that kind of determination without the information. So I would really encourage the applicant to, to flesh it out and then also to, to provide us with a comparative, uh, chart of the, the impacts. And so we can really quantify and get our arms around it and say, we agree with you, we disagree with you, or what, what can we do? What can we do better? But I, from the standpoint of, um, if, if we're going to go with track number two, which is work with us and work with the state, uh, we, we can do that at, 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 you know, at risk of, uh, the applicant wasting time on it. If, if you're going to go to the state first, then we'll just wait to hear from you before we, we consider looking at this application again. It will just, you know, come back to us, uh, uh, when you're ready, uh, hopefully not correspondence between the professionals and, and Bob Cioli. So we'll surprise them what's going on. Uh, but, uh, I, I guess we leave it to the applicant to, to select which track they would like to go. I guess.
Sorry, I'm just writing.
So, um.
So I guess, um, Sabrina, how do we do leave this? Do you want to have some sort of, uh, something set up, uh, check base or the applicant check ba- checks base with us in the new year? Tell us, tell us where they're going, how they're doing it?
I, I think that's the best way to handle it is, 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 um, Anthony, maybe you can reconvene with your client and, um, kind of give us the path that you want to move forward on it and we can try and incorporate you into coming back before the planning board when you have more of your plans developed.
And, uh, Bob, uh, Bob and Sabrina have a, a really, I think, a, obviously a pretty good idea of the sorts of things that, that we care about. I think we've been pretty clear about it, but I'd encourage you to keep in touch with them through this next part of the process to be sure that we're sort of all communicating and trying to be efficient in your, on your behalf.
And I would, I would hold out to the applicant if, 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 uh, for some reason you feel that you need input from us, uh, And I would I would hold out to the applicant if 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 for some reason you feel that you need input from us, we can schedule for that kind of a meeting. Continue the informal hearing and see what it might be if if it would be helpful for us to provide any kind of guidance or clarity on any kind of issue that might come up with the state. But. It would also be good before we look at this ever again, if we could get that opinion letter. Finding and determining wasn't for all that it really is the state that owns the property and. And then I guess Bob has given you the. You know, the Christmas card mailing list for all the professionals to touch base with on this application. So.
Any questions, Anthony? Are you all right?
No, I mean, I got to touch base with my client. Yeah, I know. He's was never happy about this other alternative and, you know, we changed the house a few times, changed the driveway a few times. So I got to touch base with him. Discuss.
I I mean, in in the bottom line too is maybe, you know, you can bifurcate the state process and go in and speak with them to see what it is they would be looking for or willing to allow within their right of way. Or are they going to sell you the right of way area, you know, and and instead of you, you know. Who knows how they're going to handle it, but you know, to get a sense of of what they're looking for and then come back to the planning board and talk to the board about what the state is looking for. And kind of bifurcate your process with the state, maybe.
Yeah.
So. Who knows? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, we received a very late email that Chappica Crossing would like to adjourn from this meeting. There were some issues, so they need to postpone their appearance before you.
Okay, well, this was as close as we could schedule to Christmas, and I don't understand why they would cancel.
I think there's personal matters with some of their team that they couldn't come tonight, so.
The holidays just aren't gonna be the holidays.
I know.
Alrighty, well, okay. So our next item is a presentation. Of fifty North Greeley Avenue. So we have, I guess, representatives of the applicants here. Welcome. Not often we find any live people here. Outside of, we're alive, sort of. So this is a presentation by the Gray Orneski Architecture regarding proposed mixed use residential building on fifty North Greeley.
Jeffrey Davis from Bear Development Holdings. We are the applicant with the owner of the property, Don Pineberg and family. So we are planning to build a residential and retail building at the former Rite Aid site in town. So one of the things we do when we come into a town is we want to meet with the elected officials, representatives from the community and kind of get everybody's intake of what they'd like to see on the site. So the first thing we started to hear was how much affordability was wanted in the building. How much retail was wanted, what type of retail was wanted. And we started planning from there. So when you see our presentation, you'll notice. We went in with a family oriented restaurant concept on the first floor. We widened the sidewalks on the street. We went from ten percent affordable up to twelve with a combination of affordable and workforce housing, so ten percent being affordable, two percent being workforce. We took our retail footprint and it's a little over four thousand square feet now.
So two percent workforce, how many units?
So that'll make it essentially. What did we say this? We have come up with an interesting parking concept where it'll be a one to one parking ratio for the residential. We'll have car sharing for the residential units as well. Where you'll be able to actually rent an electric vehicle, so you don't have to have an extra car or a car at all if you don't want to. And be able to use a car around town, take it for a couple hours a day. Long weekend if you'd like. We'll have electric scooters, electric bikes. Plenty of bike parking, scooter parking, et cetera. Out to Metro right down the street from the train station. We'll additionally have parking, some parking for the commercial as well as on-street parking as well. So in total, we'll have fifty-three parking spots with forty-five parking spots for the forty-five apartments and the eight for the commercial and car sharing. There's been a whole load of studies going on around the country about car sharing, the use of cars throughout. Country that you don't actually need as many cars as we think we do anymore. We'll dig into that a little bit further. Being that we're so close to the train station, we think this is an ideal development that doesn't need to be so parking centric and can really take advantage of the downtown area. And the train station and the community that's here. One thing you'll notice in even looking at the slide that's up here and as we go through it with the with Andrew. You'll notice how wide the sidewalk is here. So we've really just increased with an additional eight feet of sidewalk area for that open concept to have just that much. Green space and additional space for residents as well as the community. We thought it was very important to make this just an open plan. And increase that area. And I'm really gonna turn this over to Andrew. You're not gonna want to hear this from me because I'm gonna just mess it up. But this is gonna be a completely green mass timber sustainable building with a zero carbon footprint. And I'm gonna pass this on to him.
You're gonna you're gonna do this?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Hi, I'm Andrew Ruff from with Bear Against Architecture, based in New Haven, so we're leading the design team for this project. We have a presentation that walks through the product as currently designed. They're gonna, there's more discussion about the kind of planning, special permit language that is kind of. Paired with this project, so Phil will talk about that, and I'm happy to elaborate on some of the sustainability metrics that are that are part of that, but we'll talk about the the project as kind of an example of how that. Framework could be enacted and such that the types of development it would encourage. So whoever's driving it could go to the next slide. Is that you or is that the mysterious? So. We've given this presentation a couple of times to the the town board in the past, so. Please tell me to hurry along if you've watched this presentation before, but this is a view of the current site, this was taken back in, I believe in June. From essentially south of the site with the current Rite Aid. Next slide. And. Generally, what we're proposing is exactly as Jeff described it, at the ground floor level, it's a mixture of public open space. Retail space that is facing onto the activated sidewalk, amenity spaces for the residential tenants. And then along the rear of the property, alongside Metro North. The fifty-three parking spaces that are effectively shielded from the street by by the building, the kind of occupied spaces of the building itself. And so you'll see this more in the plans, but what you can see is there's clearly defined. Increased areas of sidewalk that become. Actual public spaces, you know, they're not, you know, a nominal space of the district, you know, in some cases thirty feet deep, so it's actually seating, it's it's part of the restaurant, it's part of the retail, it's part of the amenity space for the tenants, and so really trying to find a way which. That this development can increase the the life at the street level. Not only for the residents of the building, but for people in town who might want to come and enjoy the. Restaurant or or take in the retail. So next slide, please. So again, this is the current existing site plan in all its. Beautiful dilapidated condition, which we were all very excited to try to steer it away from. I'll note that we see how this later that that currently one of the challenges with the site, other than the fact that it it. Is sitting empty, is that it's eighty percent, eighty-eight percent impervious, and so this is not a particularly effective. Contribution to the town stormwater management, essentially all of the water sheds off of this very quickly, and so in high rain events, this is a problematic. Condition, and certainly it's something that will continue to be problematic as rain events become more. Intense, and so if you go to the next slide, it's. So this is the the proposed ground floor that was diagrammed earlier. You can see a little more clearly how we have the fifty-three parking spaces along the rear of the property, abutting the the tracks. And then we have essentially a shroud of amenity spaces, commercial spaces, retail spaces. Fronting onto the public sidewalk. In in the center, that fairly thin yellow bar that is. Bike parking, so we have, as Jeff mentioned, a fairly generous amount of bicycle parking for the residents, more than one to one. Given that we understand the chap line is a is a goal of the city, you know, and we'd be at the kind of northern terminus of the chap line. That's certainly a mode of transportation that this development would like to encourage and and having that as a very public facing amenity onto the street, you know, really signaling to both the tenants and to the. To the town that, you know, this is a viable means of transportation that that this project is embracing.
So in this first floor. The red is basically exterior sidewalk and open space outside.
No, so the red is retail. Yeah.
This is store, this is the outside area.
Exactly, correct, yeah.
And what is this, the gray?
So those are back of house mechanical spaces, storage spaces.
And then all of this area?
That's all the parking.
All residential.
Parking.
Yeah, yeah, so there's no residential units at the ground floor.
So where is the commercial parking again?
So it is within that fifty-three spaces in that in that single parking lot.
It's actually in that parking lot?
That's correct.
In that dead end parking lot?
That's correct. Okay.
I have a question. On the first slide. The the building compared to the existing buildings looked like it was only a two-story building that you're proposing.
So what we were showing in that diagram was just the the ground floor to show the composition of the ground floor.
I didn't catch that in what you said.
And so how would the parking lot be accessed?
You can see at the northern end, there's an opening, so it's a two-way entrance.
Here?
Nope. Right.
Okay.
So right next to the bike.
Yeah, I mean, for for obvious geometric reasons, as well as the orientation of the site to the town. The southern end is much more valuable, you know, we actually have the space to to have usable retail space, and that's obviously where most people will be interacting with the building, and so really. Pushing as much as we can, the public facing program of the building at the ground floor to that end, and the north becomes much more about parking access and tenant amenities, so, you know. If you're going there, you have an actual reason to go to the far end of the site.
Okay.
So. Should we just let you continue? I'm sorry.
I I just want to follow the map, that's all. I have no, this is not comment, I'm just, I'm just trying to follow.
Feel free to. Yeah, that's fine.
I'll have questions again.
Okay, okay. Yeah, if you want to go to the next slide, so we'll go up to a. Typical residential floor plate. Great, so. As you can see in in the organization of the plan, the yellow is amenity and circulation space, that's towards the west of the site along the railroad tracks. And what we've been very intentional about is not having any of the residential units face onto the tracks, so that's obvious acoustic reasons, light, air safety. And and that is a cost essentially to the project. I mean, we're we're taking away one of the, it's a four hundred and thirty foot long facade that we're essentially. Seating over to back of house uses, and so in order to to make up for that and to ensure that all the residents have quality access to natural light, to ventilation, to privacy. We've created a series of these three courtyards, and so the the essentially the bars of the building are running generally perpendicular north Greeley. It presents a essentially a smaller volume on North Greeley than if we were to say do a a three hundred and fifty foot street wall. And and it also guarantees that the residents have. Public space, garden space that is essentially concealed from the train tracks by the building itself, and so. We think that this also offers advantages to the residents along North Greeley, and so this is acting as a shield to either the noise of the train. If you have the lovely bus depot across North Greeley, and so giving it essentially a better backdrop building than what currently exists. And so the the. The apartments themselves, it's a mixture of mostly two and one bedrooms. There's one studio each level, and as Jeff mentioned, that twelve percent combination of affordable and workforce would be equally distributed across all those. Types of units. Any questions on this plan? Great, go to the next slide, please. And then just looking at the roof plan, so one of the goals of this project is. Not only to to improve the permeable ratio of the current site. But to really exceed what the standards might be for a development of the scale, and so one of the strategies, both in terms of the courtyards as well as the roofs, is looking at opportunities for green roofs. And specifically ones that can meet the DEC standards for green roofs that actually filter water and. Retard the flow onto the street, and so this is something that our civil engineer Langen is working with us on. And and we understand that this this particular area in North Greeley has been prone to flooding in the past, and so if this can actually act as a sponge. Retard that flow, let the system clear and then discharge at a later time. This, we we imagine this is a fairly valuable amenity to the infrastructure of of Chappaqua. So next slide. So this is a a section looking to the north, and so on the west, you you can see the train tracks and the bus depot. On the east, you can see the rise up to King Street, and so this is to help give a sense of the scale of the building, that it is four stories with a with a max average height at the at the slope of fifty feet. Which is if in isolation of perhaps of North Greeley, a a large building, but if you look at it within the immediate context of the neighborhood, you actually see that very quickly, the King Street townhomes are actually. Taller than this building and looking out across the rooftop rather than having their view obscured by the actual facade. Next slide, please. This is just a quick rendering of the elevation, so again, you can see the since the four primary volumes of the building facing onto North Greeley. And then receding into the background a bit is that linear strip that faces onto the railroad, so this, again, this doesn't present. To the street as a single monolithic development, it would present more as. Four volumes with a with an activated ground floor space. Next slide, please. And just a slightly more detailed version of that section, and so. Probably worth pointing out, we have a few challenges on the site, so one of them obviously is the proximity to Metro North. It is at a higher elevation than than essentially our average site, and so we have, we need a way to retain, and so using the. The parking at grade to kind of make up some of that retainage towards Metro North. We are at each of these courtyards. Creating a fairly deep recess, and so that that ranges from from fifty feet to twenty feet as you move up to the build, move up the site. So it creates a fairly large courtyard for the residents to enjoy this. These would be. For the residents of the building and not open to the public, but certainly planted in such a way that as the you move King Street, this would be essentially, this would become the foreground. You'd be seeing planting in front of the buildings essentially. And then obviously, we're, you can see we have some balconies, and so every of these residential units has outdoor space, private outdoor space, whether it's an inset balcony or a balcony that's suspended from the facade. Next slide. The material power of the building, the intention is that we would be using some kind of engineered wood siding for the, as a primary siding material. We'd be utilizing a a masonry cladding at the base, and then we would, where we do have more of a storefront condition at the commercial, retail, and amenity. We'd be utilizing a curtain wall system with a timber frame, and the. The materiality of this is important for for a few reasons. If you go to the next slide, please. So the the material strategy for this building is actually mass timber construction for the for the entire project, perhaps safer parts of the parking garage, but. Otherwise, it would all be based out of engineered timber, and so this is a project that's currently under construction. That our office designed in New Haven. There's a few other examples in the slide deck. For those of you unfamiliar with what this means from materials perspective, engineered timbers, laminated dimensional lumber. Cross-laminated timber, nail laminated timber. But the end effect is you're you're taking smaller dimensional pieces of lumber. You're laminating them mechanically or through adhesive into large format panels that are up to ten feet by fifty feet long. And so these can produce floor decks, it can produce walls, ceilings. Basically, the entire building structure and envelope can be produced out of timber, which is then insulated and clad, and this gives a. A a number of benefits that this project that we think is really important to this project. One, it turns the project into a giant carbon sink. So all of the the carbon that was sequestered by those trees over the course of its life, instead of being returned to the atmosphere when it's either burned or biodegraded. Is is stored in a what essentially durable building, and so that building will be around for a hundred and fifty years. In a moment, let's say. In which time, you know, that that carbon will remain locked up in the building. It also is incredibly airtight, and so instead of building, let's say, a wall assembly out of dozens of two-by-fours and sheeting and then membrane. You you have four joints at each side of the of the monolithic panel, and then you have a continuous layer of exterior insulation, and so it produces a very well insulated, very airtight construction. And then beyond that, it has, you know, numerous benefits of living inside with exposed natural materials. It can regulate the indoor air humidity by absorbing and disorbing moisture, so as a. The the quality of the residence life, the the quality of the essentially the construction of it, so that. Contributes to the performance of the building itself, and then for the construction, because. You can see this is a. What you see here, what happened about five days. They come prefabricated, pre-drilled. They go together, it's a bit of a cliche, like a set of Legos. So really, the only activity you see on site, maybe the next. Um, so really the only activity you see on site, maybe the next, uh, slide can better illustrate this, is, um, that you have a crane operator, uh, you have a foreman, and you have a handful of carpenters with screw guns. And, and that for the erection of your entire, uh, building and structure and potentially enclosure is your site crew.
Are the structural, you know, I'm sorry, old-fashioned, structural beams, because you can, consist of the same sort of timber material?
Yeah, so, so the traditional way you might think about this is glue-lem, which I'm sure you've seen around. So this, that, that technology was developed in the nineteen-tens, nineteen-twenties. Uh, they took that basically same principle and applied it to, uh, to be cross-laminating. So you get two axes of strength rather than a single axis of strength. And so glue-lem beams and columns are absolutely part, can be part of this. Um, the, the big difference is that you went from a kind of a single linear element to a plate element. And so now you're basically replicating what, what concrete can do, um, as, as a construction system. And so for infill, let's go and say urban-style construction, this has a number of advantages that we think are appropriate for this building.
Sorry, are you suggesting that it's essentially built from a kit of panels? And there really is, as a consequence, there is really no need for, uh, beams and columns?
There can be a reduction of beams and columns, uh, depending, I mean, there, there are versions of it where you have, uh, and you'll see this actually.
Design proposal for the site.
We're a little early for that.
Okay.
But, um, that's fine. So, so this particular example is, is a multifamily building. Uh, it has no beams, it has no columns, it is all plant panelized construction. So it's kind of a honeycomb. Um, if you advance a couple of slides.
So, uh, can I ask, uh, this technology is, is proposed for ground floor up or, uh, on top of the, of the retail level?
It would be ground floor up, yeah. So, so this technology, um, uh, in the current twenty, twenty-one.
Including the parking garage?
It can be, absolutely. Their parking garage is built out of this. Um, and, and our benefit is that we have the parking on a slab, so we're not driving on top of wood, which, which people have done. Um, it's, it's fairly uncommon, but in this case, it's just a ceiling surface.
So that would be great for the.
Right, exactly, exactly. Um, so this is an example of, of an apartment building that uses more of a, a, a posted beam with a, with a floor plate. The, the, one of the big advantages of the system generally is that the, the spanning dimension of the panel, you're able to span, let's say, uh, thirteen feet with a, a six-inch panel. And so if you were to compare that to conventional wood framing, uh, you might have a, a two-foot-deep web joist. And so what that means when we begin to add stories on top of each other is that we're able to, to get more building out of a lower overall height. Um, and so, you know, when, we understand this is a very, fairly height-conscious, um, area of town. And so we're able to accommodate the fairly intense needs of a, not only a retail space, but a commercial kitchen, ventilation, um, exhaust, acoustics, um, as well as for, or three additional levels of residential above that, while still keeping the height below fifty feet.
So let me ask then, because there's going to have to be provisioned somewhere for plumbing and electrical and conduits and all that stuff and chases and so on.
Yep.
So in a typical residential application, what do you end up with a floor-to-ceiling depth?
Sure. It, it varies, uh, generally. So one of, one of the challenges with building like this is that it is, you know, it's just like building a giant musical instrument, it's very acoustically live. And so in order to produce the right acoustic separation, you have to do a, a couple of things. One is you have to add mass. And so typically that's achieved by adding a thin, either jipcrete or concrete copying screed on top. So maybe inch to three inches deep on top of the timber, uh, and then some kind of acoustic decoupling membrane. And so that typically is sufficient to produce a, a fairly robust sound isolation between levels, you know, between units. Uh, and so that adds, you know, three to four inches at max, uh, to the overall floor construction. And so really depending on the span, you're, you're looking at something about, you know, eight, nine inches maximum depth.
So floor to floor is?
Oh, so floor to floor, uh, in our case, we're saying it's, it's ten feet floor to floor.
So where do you, so where do you, so where do you run, um, I mean, there's ceiling fixtures here, where do you run the conduits?
Yeah, so, so typically when you have a topping slab, you can utilize the conduit through the slab of dropping down. Um, and then it's just really intentional placement of all the, the vertical runs. And so it's, it's just planning ahead. And it's a different philosophy than if you were to design something that inherently has cavities.
And so that's, so that's buried in the, in the sandwich, uh, if you said, not eight, nine inches?
Yeah, and certainly there would be areas with drop ceilings. Um, that would be, that would be, I think the next slide might have, or if you advanced past it. No, if you go back two slides, there's a good image. Oh, it's disappeared. Okay, um, that's fine. Uh, so i- in some places, certainly over bathrooms, uh, over kitchens, you might have a drop ceiling. Um, but generally you're, you're able to benefit from that higher floor-to-floor allowance.
I, I presume this obviously meets, uh, New York State Building Code, but.
Absolutely.
What is the, what's the rating on this for fire?
Uh, so it's, it's incredibly resilient to fire. So, so this is a great example of it. So this is actually, so this is, like I said, this is New Haven, this is currently under construction. Uh, this is the continent's taller, tallest, uh, mass timber elevator shaft. So this is seventy-five-foot-tall elevator shaft constructed entirely of the CLT panels. Uh, so it's balloon framed, so, um, each panel is, uh, thirty-six and a half feet tall, um, stacked on top of each other. And this has a two-hour rating. And this is proven by a whole host of fire tests. So the, not only independent manufacturers doing fire tests, but the ATF has done extensive fire testing of this. Department of Defense has done fire and blast testing of this. So there's a, a whole host of Department of Defense, um, army-based facilities being built out of this. The benefit is that it is a monolithic product and that, and it would, when exposed to a fire, it chars and that char layer becomes insulative layer. And so, uh, as long as you're factoring in that char into the calculations, it essentially buffers that interior core and it remains viable as a structural element. And so unlike, let's say, steel, when exposed to a certain temperature, uh, in a fire condition, it has a catastrophic failure. This is essentially insulated by, by itself and is more stable and predictable in its fire performance.
Well, I, I was just wondering about the, the so-called chimney effect, uh, when heat builds up. Um, and it's my understanding that some of these, uh, these, these technologies actually, um, don't last that long. And in fact, uh, we've had some catastrophic fires in Westchester where things have collapsed. I don't think it was this construction, but, you know, where the, the old conventional beams actually last long, but.
Yeah, so, so in the, in the current International Building Code, which, um, New York State has adopted most of, um, this is, you can use this updating your stories. So there's actually a twenty-two-story, uh, building in Milwaukee built out of this material. There's, um, a number of twenty-plus, uh, story buildings in our construction. So, so the height of this is, we're kind of well below, um, what, what would be allowed of this material plus.
So structurally, it's essentially a, an assemblage of, uh, sheer panels?
Uh, it can be, yeah, yeah, that's one way to think about it, I'm sure.
Well, it, I mean, it has to be, otherwise it's going to fall down, right? I mean, they're.
Well, in this configuration, yes, in this particular.
Right, yeah. Right. Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
Very interesting.
No, we, we have material samples of it, if you're, if you're interested in seeing it up close. Um, but yeah, I can keep going through, if you want to go to the next, uh, I guess, three slide. Uh, oh, so there's the slide that disappeared. Um, there's the drop ceiling, uh, go to the next slide, please. Next slide.
Are these your projects you're showing?
Uh, the first ones that are under construction were ours, and the other ones were, uh, not our, not ours, but completed, those are in Portland, Oregon. So these are just some renderings of the proposed development. So this is looking, uh, from the southeast, uh, looking across the street, uh, Susan Lawrence to the left. And so you're seeing what would be at the ground floor, uh, the diner concept, uh, and then the, the four bars of, of residential moving up, uh, towards the north end of North Greeley. Next slide.
Does the, does the facade, um, you said it was some sort of, does it patina over time or is that?
Yes, so, yeah, so, so I think one of the, the overarching principles of the development is, as Jeff mentioned, so we're loo- looking at materials that are, uh, sustainable, that are regenerative. Uh, we're looking at, uh, building performance systems that are minimal energy use, um, and, and looking at the facade itself, you know, one of the opportunities is to utilize a wood-based facade, something else that's, you know, bio-based to carbon storing. And so there's a, a kind of a whole host of, uh, material classes within a wood-based facade. So, um, but we're looking at particularly how, again, samples of this to look at, if you're interested, um, is a seedulated or thermally modified wood. And so it's, uh, essentially a stabilized wood that has, um, unlike maybe traditional wood, it has to be re-oiled every two years. Uh, this comes with a fifty-year warranty, and it's really just been baked at a really low temperature. And it, it essentially eradicates all the things that people, that, that would like to either degrade or be eaten. Um, and so it's, it's essentially sterilizes, for lack of a better term, the wood. And so there's a whole host of ways in which you can treat that and aesthetically, but then on the durability side, it's, it's basically the same as if you were to put fiber cement. This is a view looking, uh, essentially in the middle of the property, looking, looking south towards the main courtyard space, um, towards the diner. And you can see, again, the dimension of the sidewalk that we've kind of allowed for, that this is, is fairly expansive. Uh, next slide, please. This is from within, uh, one of the residential, uh, elevated courtyards, uh, looking out towards King Street. So again, this would be a, a pretty important feature amenity, um, for the residents, given that this is their, their primary view, uh, their primary outdoor space, uh, and really taking care to make this, um, uh, special kind of destinations within the project.
Are we looking west?
We look into the east.
East.
East, yeah, looking at, at King Street, uh, tunnels.
Is this slab on grade or are you on top of the parking lot?
You're on top of the parking garage, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, retail.
Yes, exactly.
So your back is to the railway.
Yeah. Next slide. And a, a slight aerial, again, from the southeast, um, showing the kind of full context of the project and how, uh, certainly our goal would be to enhance the view, um, of the neighbors as they look out to the west over the, the train line at the bus depot and, and perhaps offering a more attractive alternative to what currently exists.
You don't tell us about the green roofs?
Sure, uh, there's a whole host of ways, which have been, so obviously we're showing, uh, roofs that are not flat. We're, we're showing, showing, uh, kind of a series of serenaded roofs, um, for a variety of reasons. One, to add opportunities for solar panels, um, uh, onsite solar generation with about half the roofs canted towards the south. To add some visual interest, um, given the, the scale of the building, um, to respond to the kind of roof forms that we see elsewhere along Greeley. Uh, and then, uh, planting on the roofs is something that we've done fairly extensively in our, in our practice. And it's certainly a, a, a very common practice in the northeast. These would be, you know, locally, uh, yeah, cedum, maybe a thin layer, yeah. We're not talking about a fully, uh, intensive green roof with, with a kind of soil depth more minimal towards kind of shrubber, shrubs or bushes. But this is something that would be very low maintenance, um, uh, native materials, yeah. Uh, next slide. And so these are just a few aerials, just showing the project, uh, within existing site context. Again, these are, these are some drone photographs taken from earlier this summer. Uh, so looking south from, uh, close to the train station, uh, towards the north. Uh, next slide. Uh, getting a bit closer in on this particular block. And next slide. And finally, from the, from the northeast, uh, looking, looking down along North Greeley. Next slide, please. Yep, so this is just a zoning and, and building code data, uh, we can talk about this in more detail. Um, again, this is going to hear what Woodfill outlines in terms of the, the special permit language. Um, and this is, yeah, that, that language is really written around the type of building that we've proposed here. So happy to dive into any of this in more detail now, or we can wait until after Phil goes for questions, whichever you prefer.
I'm, I'm ready to hear from Phil.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I take your seat.
I know.
So, good, good evening. My name is Philip Carmel. I'm a lawyer, uh, representing the applicant. And my job tonight is to talk about, uh, the zoning that we proposed to facilitate the project that we're proposing. So we're not here for site plan approval yet, we will be, I hope, soon. We're not here for the special permit yet, we will be soon, I hope. Uh, what we're, the, the real reason we're here is the town board has referred the zoning to the planning board for your review and recommendation, uh, comments, positive, negative, questions, whatever your, um, you know, your review yields. Uh, so I'm here to, to describe the zoning for you. And if there's questions, I'll try to answer them. If you have questions and I don't have an answer, we can submit, uh, a follow-up letter a- after the meeting, if that would be helpful to you. So, um, one of the, um, key aspects of the zoning is we wanted to make sure that the town had control over the project. So I, I think Andrew is a wonderful architect, but maybe someone else would come along who's not as good an architect. And we wanted to make sure the town had adequate, uh, levers of control, uh, over the, uh, whoever would develop consistent with the zoning. So, uh, the way the zoning is structured, there's a special permit that's required and site plan approval. The planning board would be in charge of site plan approval, uh, and the town board would issue the special permit. So to get the project approved, we would need the approval of both this planning board and the town board. Um, uh, so that's one type of control. And then the spec- the special permit, uh, has a number of very specific requirements that are set forth in the proposed zoning text that would amend the, the town zoning code. Uh, and I can, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, I, I'm sure, I'm sure you guys can read. Uh, but I'm going to try to highlight some of the, what I think are some of the key criteria that are pertinent to, uh, your review of the proposed zoning text. So, uh, I, you have it in front of you, I hope? I didn't come to the slides, so you have it, okay, great. So I'm on page one, I, and I'm going to kind of march through it and just make some pertinent observations that I hopefully will be helped orient you towards what we're trying to accomplish. The, um, purpose and intent is laid out. This is called NG zero, that, um, North Greeley net zero. And there are very stringent environmental performance standards that we'll be getting to. But that's, that's a fundamental element, uh, of, uh, the zoning. Um, uh, in B, special development standards.
Well, can we look at that for a second, because I have questions. I, some of these concepts are difficult for me to, uh, to understand. So I don't want to cut them off without, you know, being my usual self, I'm not, I'm not being intelligent about this. So anyway, um, I understand some of these goals, but I, I don't understand the, explain to me, uh, so I fully understand, what is, you know, carbon-neutral construction process? Is that just because we're just kind of a single crane there, is, is that the thought?
I think that if you look at the life cycle of the project, uh, it will be carbon-neutral. That is the goal. If there's going to be no fossil fuel boilers in the project, it's going to be a hundred percent electric in terms of the operation. And in terms of the construction materials, uh, as Andrew explained, it sequesters carbon, uh, in the building material itself. Uh, it's a natural.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I think we understand that. I thought the question, which I also have, is what's a carbon-neutral construction process? Not product, you're talking about the product. The question is, I think.
Yeah, process.
Is, is process.
The practice of, uh, the, the construction process itself?
How's that carbon-neutral? Because if we're going to write this, and the town's going to write this into the code, I think it needs to be something that makes sense. And I, maybe it makes sense, but I'm not, somebody should elicit that and elucidate that so that, you know, there's some backing for, for this, for the statement that's proposed.
Yeah, I think that's a very good observation. I don't think there's specific criteria for the construction practice itself. The construction equipment, uh, that's there, so that's, that's a, a good comment. And that may warrant, uh, uh, further attention by the town board.
My, my general comment on the purposes and intent, I, I certainly understand the purpose and intent, the, the overall, obviously, goals. And I think they are, uh, consistent with, you know, our comprehensive plan. But there's a lot of, um, work baggage in here that I, I think needs to be tightened up. I, I mean, I'd really like to, uh, hit things that really make, uh, sense because it's not buildings that are going to make people healthy, it's, it's, you know, it, it just, um, needs to be tightened up. I mean, I, I, I have a much better understanding now, thank you for the presentation. I, I actually have a little more, um, insight in terms of what you mean by some of these things. But I still think, uh, we'll probably tussle with this a little bit and get some information, uh, back to you folks. At least from my standpoint, I think it would be, um, you know, I don't know how buildings, you know, increase the productivity of residents, workers and visitors or the health. You know, these are, these are just words, it turns, to me, it's, it's, it's mush. And, uh, we're talking about zoning, and zoning does not, should not be mush. It needs to be something that is really. It needs to be something that is really makes good sense for what we want to do and for the approval process. And of course, an overriding concern I have is making sure that this is not. So tailored to this one spot that we are accused of doing something that we ought not to be doing in zoning, that it should be broad enough to take. Into account the balance of North Greeley. I I think it does, I think it will, I I think we probably need to work on that, but that would be an overarching concern that I would have.
Right, I mean, this is the purpose and intent, so this is not setting forth the requirements, this is the overall vision, so I think it's. I agree with you that. Zoning should be very objective in terms of its requirements, but thi- this particular paragraph. Might be a little more leeway is appropriate, but I I hear your comment and. I'm sure the planning board is going to have comments for the town board and that's great, I mean, I'm not here to. Tell you not to do your job, so you're, you know, you're you're going to have comments.
Correct, right, and but you are here that will help us understand what your purpose and intent is.
Yes.
In the language that you have drafted for the town to review.
Right, thi- this is, just to be clear, this is actually a combination of language that we proposed and that. Has been. Commented on and edited by the town planner and the town attorney, so this is a.
Good to know.
A combination of those two things, but we are clearly the. The prime movers of this, I'm not going to try to claim otherwise, but that's what.
Pretty evident, pretty evident.
I I think that. The way I would understand this is if you're able to sort of. Tie this back to actual carbon neutrality goals, right, so if you're talking about. Parking ratios, you're talking about and redu- reduction of that and what that has in terms of carbon neutral, like I think that would be. A good structure to explain. The overall concept and of what we're trying to achieve, so absolutely everything you're, you know, whatever you're doing there. Is helping get towards it, but it's it's almost like there needs to be. An underlying layer that we can then sort of codify so that it can be used elsewhere too, which is what I think Bob's.
Well, sure, I think after we go through all of the requirements, then maybe.
Yeah.
You can go back and look at this purpose and intent and say, well, some of this makes more sense than others and we'll. We'll make whatever recommendations.
Reduction in parking is definitely one of them, the fact that you have green roofs there, you know, there is, there is. Value that you're bringing in the fact that there's no water runoff or you've you've addressed some of that, so I think really. Codifying or talking about that would be would be helpful for everyone instead of. Instead of just being sort of a high level statement, I think what Bob's saying. Or at least that's how I I would interpret it, yeah.
Right, but there are specific requirements, let's go through them, some of them are directly responsive to what is set forth here. So. The site requirements are lower down on the same page. And. We've circumscribed which areas of the town are potentially eligible for this type of special permit. It has to be in the BRP district, that's our district, in other words, that's the site, that's the district for our site. And. It also says BR, the zoning district, that was recommended by the town professional staff and there's a minimum. Lot area of thirty three thousand square feet, we qualify. And if you look at these two things, there's one other site. That would be potentially eligible for the special permit, which is the site to our north. It's a somewhat awkward site, it's larger than our site, but it's it's very thin along the railroad tracks. But that that is. In the BR district and that is more than thirty three thousand square feet, so that would be another potential. Site for the special permit and those, in my understanding, those are the only two sites in. In the town of Newcastle that would be eligible, given the criteria that are set forth here.
Well, it's also North Greeley, so North Greeley is a finite street anyway, so it's a finite district.
Yes, but so there are, it's just important to remember, there's two sites that are eligible, not just our site. Okay. Dwelling units are specified by type, it can be studios, one bedroom and two bedrooms.
Are we specifying that that they are only going to be rentals? Are there any fee components in this, fee ownership?
That's not in the zoning, I I think it's. I I think it's our our intention to have a rental project. That distinction is typically not drawn in zoning to my, in my experience.
I think you're correct, but by the same token, in the. Purpose and intent, it does speak in terms of diversity of affordability of different housing types, so. At least I interpret that sometimes to be different kinds of of arrangements. Affordable workforce, rental, market, you know, some own, maybe not, I mean, it just, I just wanted to clarify, I have, I have no. Position, I just wanted to understand that was the intention.
I I our intention is a rental apartment building with ground floor retail and with the affordability, that was previously discussed. The bicycle parking, there's specific requirements that are set forth here. There is a requirement in this that it be a mixed use project, so. As I, it, there's some flexibility about how much commercial space, but it is, it is supposed to be a mixed use project, that's. What's set forth. Towards the bottom of page two.
So what would be the, where do we see that in terms of mixed use and retail, in terms of the minimums or maxims? Would we, is it appropriate to propose that?
Well, it has to be on the ground floor.
Right.
We have not specified a minimum, the the maximum is inherent in the concept of ground floor plus.
Well, also configuration to a certain extent, of course. I'm just wondering if the town board had any input on that and any suggestions?
There there's no minimum or maximum set forth in the special permit, obviously, our application for a site plan approval is going to have to. Give you guys a site plan and it will specify a specific configuration for the building. We have minimum apartments in terms of the lot area, we're planning, as will be shown in our site plan application. Forty five dwelling units, that's our, that will be our proposal and that will satisfy these criteria here. There's requirements for green infrastructure. There's requirements for impervious coverage. And then there's parking issues are addressed on the bottom of page three. And the next page, and I think parking is. We've been told is an important issue for the town and an issue of potential concern, so. That's going to be something that warrants careful consideration.
So your probably, your proposal here is one space, how, if any, does it differ from our current requirement for residential in this district?
We are certainly proposing less parking than is required by the town zoning currently. Our proposal is to have fifty three parking spaces. And forty five dwelling units, so that. Our idea is one space for dwelling unit and then eight commercial spaces. Although it would, the exact management of the parking lot has not been decided, but it'd be shared parking. Certainly, if we're going to have any type of significant retail at all. The town code would require a lot more than eight spaces, so.
Do we require more on on residential at this point?
Yes, also residential, so we are.
So what percentage reduction are you proposing in each commercial as well as residential from our current code?
I'm not sure I can answer that question, but it's, certainly the commercial. I think the residential is is one point two?
One point three.
One point three, thank you. For residential, so that, I guess. I can't do the math so well in my head, but that'd be about twenty percent, twenty five percent less than one point three. And the commercial would be much more for. Our project. Is perhaps forty two hundred square feet of commercial, you'll see in the site plan application and. The exact parking requirements under the town code would differ depending on. The division between retail and restaurant, restaurants have more parking under the town code than retail, but. Applying the town code, you could have the requirement for thirty or forty spaces, just for the commercial.
So let me, let me ask the question a different way. If you were required, given your development program now, the number of units and the amount of retail which you're proposing. Applying the existing parking requirements, how many spaces would you need?
Well, as I say, it depends on the mix of.
Commercial, restaurant.
The retail component of the commercial versus the restaurant component of the commercial.
Yeah, it does, but give me a number.
It it would be, you know, it could be eighty or ninety spaces, I don't want to, I I don't want to try to represent an exact number to you. It would be much more than what we're proposing.
Right, I just, the order of magnitude is important for us to understand, at at least at this preliminary level, the the nature of the ask.
Yes.
And the impact on the town as a consequence of that.
Right, so there are standards set forth in a special permit for evaluating our parking proposal. And. I I get to those in a second, but let me, let me just. Discuss the underlying rationale for the whole thing, Sean, which is. We are trying to build a green project that is less auto centric than a traditional. Housing proposal in the suburbs. We are right next to the train station, we are near, you know, right next to a bus line, two bus lines that go through the town. We're going to have shared automobiles. So that people can access automobiles that they don't own. And we're trying, we're trying to. Take advantage of a different type of lifestyle, that's who we're trying to attract here. Not people who own two cars, I don't think that's our target market.
Right, right, of course.
And if you look at the. Criteria that are set forth in the special permit language we've proposed. It does require showing that there's adequate space offsite. So we've done a parking study that demonstrates that there is adequate spaces within walking distance of the project. To accommodate the parkers who will not be able to accommodate, park onsite, we'll have to present that parking study. To the planning board, we may. Have to do more parking studies, a town planner hasn't told us that our parking study is sufficient at this point, so. We're going to, we're collecting data, we're going to have to present that data to the town board and to the planning board. And we are. Confident that there'll be sufficient parking onsite and offsite. In terms of practicality with this site, you know, if. The town wanted more parking, we would just either get rid of the commercial altogether, we'd have to change the. The entire concept of the mixed use, because it's really the commercial that's driving a tremendous amount of parking, which cannot be feasibly accommodated on our site.
Shrink it very considerably too.
Right, so it could be shrunk very considerably, not have a restaurant. Obviously, if we had a very small. Purely retail operation that had minimal parking generation. We might be able to accommodate a much higher percentage of the automobiles onsite, but you know, this is. We are encouraging the town to think of this as. A more transit accessible area that should be thought of differently than if we were proposing this. Building, you know, three miles away from the train station, with what we're proposing would not be appropriate. For a location at a significant distance from the train station, nor would it be allowed, because as as you observed, the. The special permit is not even potentially applicable to locations like that, so. This is a policy issue for the town, do you want to kind of continue. Requiring applicants even at this location to have a tremendous amount of parking? Or not, it's a it's a policy issue for the town to decide, it's obviously, the applicant's not going to decide that, that's about. Planning board and the town board are going to have to decide that, we will give you data that will help you understand the parking. Availability in the town.
I think we'll have to have a really good understanding of some of the suppositions behind the the data. And we've heard about, you know, ride sharing and I think ride sharing kind of disappeared during COVID, so I mean, that was, we heard about that before and I. I'm not boo booing, I think it's it's valid, but. There there is a big difference here, so the suppositions and the assumptions need to be something that I think we're all comfortable, town board, planning board. Comfortable that are realistic for our town, we hear about how people go in their cars, but. I've seen people go from, you know, the train station to just down the block because they won't walk and they have to, they drive, I mean. It's a matter of getting used to it also at some point perhaps. I I certainly, I think we support and embrace what you're, what you're trying to do, we just want to make sure it's not a problem.
Yeah, I. If I could, you're right, the the town's going to be looking at this and they're going to be asking to us, and they already have, to help them look at this. And just to give you, you've been very generous in sharing your information and making a presentation of it. And there's just a lot to unpack here in terms of what you're asking, is not only in terms of the content. But the procedures that you're recommending, the very notion of a special permit is, I think, serious question. Whether it's necessary or not, and that's one of the things that I think we'll be discussing with the town board and you'll be finding out about that as we go through the process. With respect to the parking in particular. The notion, for example, of car sharing. Yeah, we're all for TOD development, we got the train station, you know, let's take advantage of it and build a better hamlet, right? But I don't think that car sharing is, we're still in the suburbs here. And car sharing makes sense if you're living in a condominium in Manhattan, where you only need to, you know, once every other week to, you know, go go to the countryside to visit your parents or. Go on a picnic, I think that there's a, and I could be wrong about that, but my guess is that. There will be not only on that particular subject, but new ways of looking at these things. Aren't, as I think Bob is intimating, aren't necessarily going to be the the new normal. And there should be some healthy skepticism about proposals that. Seem to be foreign to the way people live now and live here and live in the suburbs pretty much everywhere. And I think that that's something that you'll probably hear more of and we would like to know to know more about. The other thing that that is. I think not going to work, and I could be wrong, is the statement that there is plenty of parking available. Offsite to meet the parking demand requirements that. That the town may say you need to, you know, what if they say you need to have six per thousand for retail? And your answer might be, well, we'll find it and we'll find it using, you know, distant lots at two hundred and fifty feet away from that, you know, there are provisions that you would. Want to put in place as a consequence of of studies. My concern is that every parking space that. You take offsite. Is for your purposes, is an offsite parking space which somebody else in the future who wants to come in and develop their property is not available to them. And I think that that, to me, that's a fundamental town policy in terms of how they deal with town board policy. How they deal with the equitability. Of zoning. And the benefits, disbenefits, you know, however they assign those, that capacity and those benefits. To properties, not the people, but the properties, right, throughout the hamlet and throughout the town. And parking is, from my way, I mean, we've looked at this, we don't have any studies, but we've sort of understood the problem. You know, the 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 properties on. On South Greeley, I mean, on on the other side of the street are severely disadvantaged with respect to parking. And if, I think if the town is going to be looking to develop all of North Greeley. In a way which creates a real sort of village or hamlet environment. I think that those properties, just from that perspective, need to be paid attention to and just from the equity. Perspective, need to be given a fair shake in the whole process, so. I mean, that's my feeling about it and we've been around here a long time, that's my feeling about it and I I just. Want to let you know, that's, I think, the kind of conversation that we're all going to, going to be in, I may be the minority minority voice. I may be the minority, minority voice in that, but you're gonna be, hear other people say a lot about parking in this, and you're right, it's a big, it's a big question for the town.
Right, I think there's also been a change in thinking in terms of increased use of Uber and similar taxi services.
That's what the studies are all about.
And, you know, we will present data to the board and. You'll evaluate the data, so I, you know.
Jeff, did you wanna?
Okay, so it's an issue, and it's a policy issue for the town, as I, I mentioned. If you load on the parking requirements, we're just gonna have to get, essentially reduce the retail.
No, we understand that.
We don't have room, we're not gonna build a structure parking garage. There's a parking lot across the street that's, has a lot of availability, but I understand your, your point about.
I'm sorry, I, I object to your language. If we load on the parking requirements, no, the parking requirements are there. If you decide to, it's your action, you're proposing, to take off the parking requirements. Or to, to somehow morph the parking requirements in a way that make your project. Developable for you. So nobody's loading on parking requirements here. We aren't, the town isn't.
That's a fair point, I didn't mean to.
Language is important.
I, I didn't mean to imply anything otherwise, obviously.
Nobody's disavowing you.
As I've been very clear, we are asking for. Less parking than would otherwise be required by the town code. I wasn't trying to apply otherwise.
And we understand it's gonna be, it's, it's critical to your, your, your project, so it'll be, I think, very interesting to see what, what you, what you develop and what you present to us.
Okay.
And help us understand this.
So just continuing on page four, we talk about, we have electric, electric vehicle charging, because we anticipate that. That's the way the world is going. And then there's very specific performance standards for the environmental sustainability of the, of the building. In terms of green building standards, it has to be a hundred percent electric. And the building materials have to meet certain standards. That are specified. On page five, and the type of materials that Andrew mentioned in his presentation would satisfy those criteria. And we will demonstrate that in our application. There's open space requirements. There are bulk restrictions. That are, I think, pretty easy to understand. The height on page six is limited to sixty feet or four stories. We believe that height is appropriate, given the slope. That goes up and the, and the profiles that you saw in the slide presentation.
So the sixty feet, just understand, I think that was at the peak, because I think you said it was averaging about forty-five feet.
It's fifty feet average, but the roofs are peaked.
So I'm sorry, just to detail, what does propose a floor-to-floor height on the residential then?
Yeah, so the, the ground floor is fifteen foot clear height, and then approximately ten feet floor-to-floor for the upper levels. And then, of course, we have roof, so the, the upper heights is, the max height is fifty-five, so that includes elevator overrides, mechanical space, et cetera.
And then. The back end of the, are the application procedures. Which involves site plan approval, special permit approval. And. Architectural board of review approval, which we always have. For these types of projects in Newcastle. And it envisions a joint hearings in front of the town board and the planning board. With respect to the, the application for special permit and site plan approval would be joint hearing, so. In the hopes of improving communication between the two boards and frankly, making it more. Leading things along for the applicant would be our goal also, because we wanna build the project, obviously. So that gives you an overview of the zoning and. Happy to answer questions. I obviously already have a lot of questions, but we're, we look forward to the planning board's review and. If there's things that you think should be changed, obviously, the town board will have to decide what to do about that, but we would be, you know, we're interested in those comments.
I mean, I have lots of thoughts, but I, I'll, I will start with the tail end of the zoning piece of it. Just so I understand. I, I, I think I understand the, the limitations or the requirements that the special permit puts on you, the applicant. But what is the purpose of the special permit from your point of view? What is the ask here of the town from this, what is the purpose of the special permit? Is it just the parking? Is it parking in height? What, 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 why, why does the special permit exist? Why are you proposing a new special permit?
Well, I think it's to give another level of control over the project. The idea of it is a. Highly sustainable project that meets certain sustainability criteria. So I thought that that would be appropriately incorporated into a special permit. Now, there's, we're, we're seeking a, a trade-off, perhaps, in, in some sense, that we're asking for. Four floors, which is an ask in the town of Newcastle. We're asking for less parking, which is an ask. And we are also promising a very sustainable project, and there's specific criteria here. And it's, and we're limiting it to just as, essentially a small area close to the train station. So we thought a special permit was an appropriate means of control and.
So is the special permit idea that, the genesis of that was on your end, or the town board or town planner asked for it?
This was an approach by the applicant to, to create legislation, to create a new special permit, because their project did not meet any of the current zoning. So it was the applicant's proposal for a special permit.
Okay. Yeah, so. I, I think Tom touched on this a little bit, there, there's sort of the process by which we are making these decisions. And that has, that's worthy of a lot of, a lot of questions, and certainly I think it can be improved significantly. When it comes to the concept of what's being proposed ultimately. I absolutely love it and am very, very supportive of the concept, and, and I think the presentation, especially. Andrew was it? Was exceptional and very well-prepared and really helpful to understand both the concept and the ultimate proposal here. And my, most of my concerns and questions will be on how to make this successful for you, sure, but really for the town. Because I would love to see more of this, and this is very much a new concept for the town of Newcastle. And. I would, I wanna make sure that everything, any input that we have. Furters the potential success of this project, because it has far-ranging implications for the rest of the town. Beyond just this site. So, so I'm very excited to see where this goes and to be as helpful as we can to make sure it, it is, it is successful. I, I know, I know you have a ton of questions, Con, and I have, I have a bunch of questions, but go ahead.
Now, I was just gonna add that. What I like about this, and I'm gonna start with what I like about this, is the fact that we are putting our foot forward with all the right sort of intentions for this site. I do agree with Eldar that we wanna see that we come out of this with. Quotifiable ways to have, to see how other things will be developed around it, so that's important to us. But the fact that the site is vacant, the, the, where it is located, the idea that if we have any density in town. These are the sites that are going to get developed, so from all those perspectives. As a first pass, it's, it's a really beautifully laid-out concept, you've thought about things that matter to us as in this town. And so, kudos, like, I think that's a great first step. We will have a lot of conversations, and these are things that we are trying to hammer out. If we want, you know, if, if we want an activated sidewalk, and if we want a walkable downtown. We're going to have to think about parking and park, you know, the reduction of parking or no parking. And Tom's right that if we give away parking, you know, so we would have to make a decision. Thinking about what is gonna get built eventually, and will there be enough parking for the guys who are gonna build later? Then we can always talk about how much parking can be reduced, so this is going to be a point of contention. But it's a step forward, it's very important to recognize that it's close to the train station, this is where it's possible. And, you know, everything that we're seeing right now. In terms of materials, in terms of conversations of how it'll get built, how quickly it'll get put together, all of that matters to us. And I think tying that to your overall conversation of. You know, being a carbon-zero, carbon-neutral proposal would, would help us. Is what I would start with.
So. I have a couple of other thoughts. Just on the parking question, I think we have to talk about residential parking and commercial parking separately. We talk about the proximity to the train station, and is relevant from my perspective exclusively to the, to the residential component, right? And I, I mean, I'm very eager to see all these studies, because I would love for them all to be, you know, based in solid research and definitive. Because I would love for this project to be successful with as little parking as possible. I just worry about the commercial piece of it, and. The other part of the commercial piece, you know, it is a very, because of the, the shape of the lot, and then the design of the. Of the open space, you have created sort of a unique shape to the commercial space. And so two questions about that. One, it's very specific, right, and, and so, which may limit its potential. Success. And so I worry about that, because I don't want, what I don't want is this project to be built and just have a vacant ground floor, right? Because that, that's a failure from, from my perspective, and will not sort of engender additional support for such projects. And so I wanna make sure that we're not designing something that really looks amazing and then ends up being not great. And then. The other question I had was just about the retail space, you were talking about, I think, two spaces, right, two separate uses. Is that codified in the language as far as, or, or will it be a Rite Aid? When it's, when it's done, occupying both spaces?
No, we, well, the, the site plan, I think, has, shows two, we, we, commercial spaces. Let's not say commercial, because it could be retail or restaurant. I think the idea will be retail in the northern space, which is smaller, and restaurant in the southern space. But, you know, whether. Whether the developer can get a restaurant tenant, you know, I don't, I don't know. You're right, there's a market component to that, so the, we're hoping to have flexibility to see. What can be feasibly leased.
So we may, we may have to look through, when we're talking about the site plan, think through what the, the shape of the, of the retail space is and the number of spaces.
Height, I don't, I don't know if that matters, I think it's high enough that it doesn't matter.
So we've designed the retail specifically, that it's at the section of the building that's closest to everything else in town.
Yes, which makes perfect sense.
We originally had sixty-five hundred square feet, we actually brought it down to forty-two hundred square feet. We were told that everybody in town wants a diner or a community restaurant, something that's open all day into the evening. So we designed the space to accommodate, it could be a restaurant, it could be retail. We do a lot of retail business, so we looked at it, so it's forward-facing towards the rest of town with an outdoor area. So it could be the maximum leasable space to fit into the community. And then the balance is a small sliver of retail, so we thought about the most storefront, high ceilings. That's why, if you saw the renderings, you've really got a good fifteen-foot ceiling in there and be able to fit three floors above it. We spent a lot of time building out that retail space with something that'll work, with, if you looked at one of the renderings, if you guys wanna go back to it, we can. It's got a garage door opening, so you can really open up that space.
The renderings are beautiful, I mean.
That's how we designed the retail, to make that space as attractive and community-friendly as possible. So that it'll fit into the community and be used and attractive to an operator.
Do you own the site?
I am partners with the owner.
Right.
They brought me in to develop it. All I do is develop it all day, I sit in a lot of these meetings throughout the country, and our first goal is to see what everybody in town wants. And we are a diner, restaurant, and we gear that space towards that. And if we can deliver on that, we'd love to do so.
Can I ask some questions about the, this, the language? On page one. Under site requirements, C under variances. I don't know if this is just like a typo or, it says zoning board of appeals upon a showing of unnecessary hardship. That we're unnecessary, should we maybe undue hardship, or I, I don't know. Right? I mean, hardship isn't unnecessary.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. Just wanna make sure I'm not missing.
I think the language is intended to track the New York State town law provisions on, on variances, but we can double-check that. And make sure that the correct language is, is used.
Okay, and then as far as dwelling units. This, I understand, is like sort of an imposition you're putting on yourself, sort of to give the town control, but you're limiting it to efficiency studios, one and two bedrooms. Why are we limiting it to that? And also, if this will apply to other sites. Then that's a limitation that's gonna apply to those sites as well. I'm not crazy about that limitation, I, I mean, larger units can be interesting too, from my perspective. And then additionally, the, the limitation on square footage, right, that you have it at between five hundred and two thousand. Goes with the limitation on the, the, from my perspective, the bedroom count. I'm curious, is that something that was put on you, or something that you want sort of to restrict yourselves for some reason? What is the thinking behind the unit limitation?
Sure, well, one of the issues that we. Forsoa as being a potential point of controversy was whether there would be a lot of schoolchildren generated for the public school system in the town of Newcastle. And we. We designed the project with our unit mix and the typology of the project, so that it would not. Generate that many schoolchildren, and we've, our secret documents estimate what they would be, but if we had larger units, there would be more family.
I understand why you did that, but.
It might generate more schoolchildren, we thought that would be less well-received. I mean, from the applicant's standpoint, having perfect, you know, a hundred percent flexibility would be fine, but we thought that might not be as well-received by the town.
What are you seeing as the market requirement, like, based on market studies, what is it that you're seeing would work? If we were to not talk about the town itself, like, what is it that the market would support here?
Well, we, we think this is an economically viable project, I think Jeff would be in a better position than I am to talk about market conditions.
We could build a combination of one-twos and threes. We were looking at all of the response to the Form 8 code prior to us, and the response of larger units was one of the things. And the school system that came with a terrible response when we started this. We've, we've been, just to give everybody a little bit of background, I've been doing this project, working on it for about a year. We, this is our first time in front of you, but we've been, I've been in front of the town board several times, we've been doing community outreach and meeting with the neighbors. So we've been working on this for quite some time, vetting out where we thought kind of the pitfalls would be with the project.
What has the community outreach been like?
All of the neighbors around us, meeting with them of their concerns about our project, height, open space.
It's a very small sliver of the community, right?
Of course. I understand completely, and, and let us give you some of our opinions of what we've been dealing with so far. We've been thrown as a yo-yo. This project is owned by the Feinberg family, Rite Aid is the current, or Walgreens is the tenant, they are still paying them rent. They will not be paying them rent forever. We've been going through this process for one year. There was a moratorium on their project. Which was unconstitutional, and I'll say that now and continue to say. We've been trying very hard to do this project and work with everybody in the town to get to a point where we can go somewhere with it. We understand the parking requirements that everybody has, we're trying to build a green project. Having to fulfill a parking requirement really doesn't make your green project. So we're trying to find the right secret sauce that works for everybody. That's why the first thing I said is we walk into a town and ask, what does everybody want to make it work? And, and we're really trying to make. And, and we're really trying to make everything work. And you pull, 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 what, and that's what the special permit concept kind of was there? Make some, put more affordable in. Let's go a little higher, let's reduce the parking. Let's find what levers to push and pull that works for everybody to see if we can make this project work. If you can't make it work, we can't make it work. But hopefully, I think this would be a great project for the town. I think it's a dilapidated site right now. It's an eyesore, and I think mixed use there with affordable, green project would be fantastic. And it really puts Newcastle at the forefront of putting something out there that would be fantastic. Um, and be replicated up and down the eastern seaboard throughout the country. And hopefully we can do it. And hopefully with your help, we'll be able to do it.
Got it. That's helpful. Question just on the affordable housing, um, uh, provision here in, in the text. It just references, um, a section of, of, of our zoning code, right? And, and, uh, you, you talked about twelve percent. Our code asks for ten percent. So you, I understand that the additional two percent is this workforce housing. But is what's proposed in the special permit language not consistent with what you're actually proposing? It seems like a lesser limitation.
We're proposing more. Our site plan application will have.
Right. I like that you're proposing more, to be clear. I just want to understand, I mean, why wouldn't then this special permit language say twelve percent? If it's going to apply potentially to another site?
We would have no objection to that, if that, if that's.
If you are proposing twelve, you know, because then you were the next owner could then build ten if, if the limitation is ten, right?
So we're talking five units, right? Forty-five, so we're talking five units, would that be right?
I, early on, excuse me, I'd like to talk for a bit. Uh, early on, you mentioned that the twelve percent was for affordable housing and workforce, which is a slightly higher category. Another thing that you noted was that this new building would cut down the noise for the buildings and, and people that live there and work there across the street. Now, I assume that you're going to have some extra special insulation to make sure that the noise doesn't affect the people that would take over space in the building you're talking about. We've done that on other projects, uh, or at least one other major project. Uh, also, the height of the building is such that the houses that are across the street, uh, you know, with their lower areas perhaps being, um, you know, retail, you're going to cut the amount of sun they get in the afternoon, which is perhaps not important to some, but I think it's important to everybody. Uh, and then the other thing is electrical cars, fine. If you can afford them, you can have the, you know, the spaces. But I, I'm not a little, I'm not a fan yet of the battery operated bicycles. Because there's enough stories out there about lithium fires on, on the cars, not to mention, you know, these other smaller features. So I would hope that there would be enough safety devices inside the parking area to be able to put out lithium fires. Other than that, very interesting project.
All right, let me just address the issue of the shadows that you mentioned.
Sure.
We're going to have, we will, we have a shadow study. We will be presenting that to the board in connection with our site plan, uh, application. So we, we will demonstrate what the shadows are, what times of day, and the seasons and that type of thing. So we will respond to that comment.
How, um, this is probably a question really for the developer. You know, i- in a perfect world, um, you've been pushed and pulled and tossed already. But what would your preference be in terms of, uh, the retail commercial? It seems to me that things would be a whole lot more simple if this was, uh, completely residential. And I've asked other developers that in the middle of the project, of course, at that point, they, they turned and screamed at me, of course I would like to do away with the commercial.
No, I, I think there needs to be some accessory retail. And I think, I mean, if you come down this side of town, anytime after dark, it's completely barren. You eat at Le Jardin, I mean, nobody parks in the back really anymore. You park up front. So I think if there were some activation, Susan Lawrence closes, I think, at what? Six, right? So, so there's really no activation. So I think if there's some activation, if it was a small cafe or something even, and not four thousand square feet of a diner or something, I think something needs to activate and pull town down further would be great. And it's also, it's an amenity to residents as well. You can go downstairs, I think it would be beneficial. So maybe not four thousand, twenty-five, something.
Okay. I'm just concerned with, um, uh, it being a stumbling block for you on this parking issue and, and how we get through all that.
We did a parking study, so let, let's everybody review it.
Yeah.
Um, it's very telling from, uh, I joke about the parking in town all the time. My wife, my kids are in town multiple times a week. At lunchtime, it's busy in town. But I mean, from four thirty on, there's a load of parking. So I think it's, you'll notice when you review the parking study, it's, it's interesting to read. There's certainly times that are tough, um, but still meet the requirements for, um, whatever the parking studies are from the professionals. Not a parking professional, I'm like you, I want to park ten feet from where I'm going. I'm about to horse comes, uh, but I'm not going to be in one renting. But when you read it, you'll see that, uh, parking requirements can be met for the town. And as you go further out from distance, there's a, a sea of parking, so.
So which way, to the north or south?
What was it? I read that thing three times and it's still, it was just too much for me.
So, um, uh, this is going to be a long conversation, I think, and it should be, right? But it's more than, than the existing parking demand. It's future demand that, that we as planners, planning board, and I think the town board really need to be concerned about. And so the parking studies are going to be very helpful. We have been arguing that the town board ought to be doing a parking head for a long time. We said, you've got to figure out what's going on down here. And with the current zoning, if you were to develop under current zoning and could develop under current zoning, what would be the parking demand for that? Now, it's a very complicated question because some sites you can't develop the current zoning because they're so constricted, right? So it gets to be something which is not such an easy answer. But you got to try and find out what the answer is and make some assumptions in order to protect the existing property owners who are not yet ready to develop. That's what speech I was making before.
I agree.
So the parking study is going to be helpful to that, but that's not out of the equation. That needs to be put in the equation, I, I think. That needs to be put in the question, somehow it's got to be figured out.
And part, and driving trends. I'm not one of them. I like cars, but people, i- it's, car sharing isn't, uh, well, when, when we said car sharing, it's almost car rental, right? You're not getting in the car with somebody else. Your, there's a dedicated cars inside the building that you take your phone and you can rent the car for two hours by yourself. It has become very popular and it stops people from having two cars and only having one.
Again, for the residents, that addresses the residential demand.
But it also addresses this whole demand, by the way, and residents can use them and you'll find it become very popular, um, because it's almost like having a car rental on demand right there.
No, I understand. My, my son lives in London, he used to do it all the time. Finally bought a car because he can afford to do it, but he's not all the time.
I finally a car these days. So, uh, we've learned a lot about this over the last few years, uh, in a lot of buildings we build. And it's become really beneficial to people. But you know, you need to go to Home Depot and you have a small car. Well, there's a pickup truck that you can rent for two hours to go to Home Depot. It's, it's interesting.
Yeah, so, um.
Again, it's not you and it's not me.
No.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I, I think Tom makes a good point. The, the, um, the future and the, uh, the proposition of what happens in the aggregate, and, and not a crazy, I'll build out max, you know, so no one will ever do anything. But, um, a realistic study, I think that, I mean, what you've done, I'm sure is going to be incredibly helpful. But we're, we're going to have to project over and above that.
And also, what happens with the parking lots? Do they stay one story? Do you build a parking deck for the train station? I mean.
Yeah, well, those, yeah.
Boy, don't go there. You will never get this built.
One directly from across from us isn't even striped.
And then they are empty, I mean, that, yes, so.
Great. So I, it, this is where I am on this right now. I still don't, somebody has to explain to me, you don't have to, it'd be, it'd be nice if I could understand it better. What the, what the real need is, what the real, why, why would the town want to burden their zoning code with this special permit? New special permit section, which is specifically tailored to a particular developer who, uh, you know, they want to come in and develop. But why would they do that? Why is that necessary? I don't understand that. Because the ask that you, that you've got, you're going to have to go through a process anyway. If you want to go to four stories, you'll have to go through a variance, right? The zoning board, I assume. Unless the town board decides to hold the, those, all of those, uh, variances to themselves, which they, they have the option.
The special permit would obviously the need to go to the.
No, I know, I know. I understand that. I know, I understand that.
Right.
But that does a reason why, that's not a sufficient reason to have a special permit.
Hundred percent.
That's my point.
Hundred percent.
And then, you know, the parking is going to be something that I think you're going to try and, it seems as though you're, you're loading into an opening within the special permit, parking strategies and conditions that allow you to build what you want to build. What are your other asks here, like four in particular? That I think I heard. Height, parking, um, room sizes. I don't think room size is a big deal. I think that if you guys got your handle on the market, that's great. I think that's your business, you know, no problem. I think that's fine. It doesn't seem like there's really a lot, right? In terms of the content of the, the specific form of the proposal, that really warrants a special permit section, muddying up the code the way I see it, with language for the special, special section for the special permit for the special site. The one thing that you didn't talk about, I don't think sufficiently so that I could understand it, is a little bit more of the process of how you intend to get there and what the special permit provision says about that. And to me, uh, there's this, the very end, the very last sentence, I think it is. It talks about the relationship between the town's authority and the planning board's authority. And it says, it's, it's, it's fairly clever, but it's pretty transparent. It says, "Site development plan by planning board. Town board's approval of a special permit shall be deemed to authorize the planning board to render a determination with respect to site development plan approval." Great. Pursuant to four forty, as of, except for compliance with everything in here, which the town board has authority on. So what it essentially does, listen, um, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but if I read it right, it's saying that the planning board really has, in the end, no special, no, um, site plan approval with respect to the conditions, the provisions within this special permit language. So.
That's absolutely correct.
Right. So I'm, I, why are you guys proposing that? Why are you taking the planning board? It's not about you and me, it's not about these guys or me. It's about the function of a planning board in a municipality. Why are you taking the planning board out of the equation?
Well, the town, the planning board would still have site plan approval authority, but not with respect to the criteria set forth in the special.
But this is the whole development.
And under the, under the town law, uh, town boards can issue special permits or they can delegate that authority to planning boards. That, that, the town law, uh.
Well, I know that. I mean, that's why I know that.
It could be done either way.
My question, my question, I'm sorry. I know it can be done either way. I want to know, I'm, I'm asking why you are proposing it.
Well, we, we propose this structure with the special permit because in order to build our project, we're going to need an amendment to the zoning code. We can't just, uh, come in and say we want a variance to build something that's.
That happens all the time.
Well, I think it would be very difficult to do.
I don't know.
I, I thought it would be more appropriate to have the policymaking, uh, body of the town, which ultimately is the town board, the elected representatives of the residents, make the policy decision whether they want to approve a project of this nature. And, uh, I don't think it's respectfully, really like a zoning board of appeals type issue. This is a policy issue, uh, and, um, whether the town wants to have this type of development in this area of the Chappockaham line. And if the town board favors that, uh, which we think they do, but obviously I don't, you know, I, they referred this to the planning board, so that indicates some level of support. Obviously, they, they still have to review your comments, uh, and get public hearings. And there's a whole, you know, by no means, uh, uh, decided. It's just we've got an initial positive feedback, otherwise we would just drop the proposal and, uh, you know, not invest further money in this process. We, we thought it was appropriate that the town board make the basic policy decision. And I still think that.
I, I'm not suggesting that I'm making a policy decision. I mean, zoning is a policy decision, but, but the execution of the, 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 the policy that you are asking them to put in place is essentially the exact physical definition, description of your development. And it seems to me that, unless I'm mistaken, there is little leeway for a, an actual site plan review. And maybe I'm wrong about this. In the, within the, the special permit authorities that you have set up, special site plan review by the planning board. And so I, I'm just wondering why. But it, it must have been, I mean, it must have been a cautious thought because it's here. I mean, it's, it's done, it was proposed to be done. I have no idea what the plant, what the town board thinks about this. We haven't talked about them, talked with them about this yet. But I'm just curious about this. I don't know why it's good for the town, might be good for you. I can see why it might be good for you, but I'm just trying to understand why it would be good for the town. And if you have an idea why that would be so.
Tom, can I just mention one thing?
Yes, please.
Um, under the current process for special permits, the planning board does not have site plan approval authority. The only thing that the planning board has jurisdiction over, over the current special permit process, and that, that is of course when the zoning board is the approval authority for the special permit, is environmental permits. So if it, so here, there's actually a modification from the current process that would otherwise be applicable under the current code for special permits, which gives the planning board more authority than they would otherwise have. Because if it was just a straight special permit under our current procedures, the town board would do both the special permit and the site plan. And you would be left with the, just stormwater. So I don't think there's any steep slopes or wetlands or any tree removal, anything else environmental related for this project.
So I told you.
So I, I just want to put that out there as a different perspective. That the structure actually gives the, the planning board more authority than it otherwise would under our current special permit procedures.
So that's incredibly helpful, uh, Jennifer, but it, it, it makes me think of two, two, two separate questions. One is, it still doesn't change the fact that were you to propose this development without a special permit, you would still need the site plan approval that would come to us, right?
Correct.
And two, if, if the draft as written is, is approved tomorrow, as written. I'll ask you a question.
Thanks.
What role does the planning board have? Because what Tom is saying is that there's a role in name only, uh, the way he's interpreting this. But I'm curious, and what, then, then Jennifer's, uh, point is that under normal special permits, you wouldn't come before us for site plan approval, or an athlete wouldn't come before us for site plan approval at all. But here you are coming before us under, uh, the language as written. But so long as you meet the requirements of the special permit, we don't really get a say, is that fair to say? Does that, does that have a language? Because, because all we'd have to do is sort of stamp, yes, you're in compliance with the site, with the requirements of the special permit, or no, you're not in compliance. But that would already have been determined, then we wouldn't really have any input. Is, is that, is that how this would play out in, in, in the real world? Were this to be approved as written?
No, I, I don't think that's the intent. And I, I know that that's not the intent. Um, and I don't think that that's necessarily how it would play out. I think what was also envisioned was that the, the special permit and the site plan process. the special permit and the site plan process would really be sort of a concurrent process, which speaks to the joint public hearing that's written into the, the procedures as well, so that the town board and the planning board would, would really review the, the special permit and the site plan application in lockstep, so that your comments can be heard by the town board, the town board's comments can be heard by you, and, and so forth. So really to be more of a, a joint effort than two boards standing alone in their own silos.
So, so I, 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 I don't mind the joint meetings, but, but it, it still sort of leaves open the question as to who votes and what's, what is determinative from those votes?
Well, look, there, there are specific criteria set forth in a special permit, and our project proposal documents would have to satisfy those criteria. But there, there would be other issues, at the driveway, about the internal circulation within the parking area, the street plantings, the, all the issues that you deal with in site plan, signage. I mean, there'd be various issues that would be.
Got it. Okay, so this is site plan approval absent the specific requirements of, 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 of the special permit?
Absolutely.
So let me.
That's correct.
Let me see if I could take that a little further. First of all, thank you, Jennifer, for helping out on that.
Sure.
The, so this is language, and then there's a drawing, right? And the, the specifics of the language, if this gets adopted, need to be honored as much as possible, right, by the town board, by the applicant, and by the planning board, in support of the whole process. But this does not necessarily lock in the design of the project. For instance, maybe we don't like the courtyards, we, maybe the town doesn't like the courtyards the way they're done. Maybe they don't like the shape of the building. They, they, they would prefer a different architectural style of, of the facade. All of those things are left in play. Is that correct?
Yes, the courtyards are, are a little bit required in a sense that there are standards for avoiding a wall up, up to a certain height on the street. We have to have setbacks, but the exact configuration.
And location.
That we've proposed, maybe if the town doesn't like it, it won't approve the project.
So there's, yeah, so there's, there's an opportunity to shape the project from a design point of view in the process.
If the planning board has specific. Yes, I mean, it's like any other project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know.
So the, the primary use of a special permit in this case is because, A, it is speeding up the process because different boards will be working with you, plus there's a bunch of different variances that would be needed to make the site work, and, and so we are creating a special permit. That's, that's what.
I think, no, cuz I, I think the special permit, just generally speaking, special permits are, are generally for uses that, it's intended to be more protective for the town. Obviously, special permits are permitted use under codes, subject to certain standards, subject to meeting certain standards. So when you have a use that you don't want to just let loose as a principally permitted use, and you wanna retain a little bit more control over that particular use, typically a special permit is the mechanism to do so. It gives the approval authority the discretion to look at the application materials and determine, are they meeting these controls that we've set forth in the code to make sure that we're getting the product and, and the use that is intended? So I don't know, think it necessarily has to do with whether variances would be required or not, because that could be handled in a different way. That could be handled in a way that, you know, you modify the B R P zoning districts to allow up to four stories and to allow a different parking requirement, but that's gonna apply to, to all the properties in the B R P and i- in the B R P district. So there are other ways to go about it, but the special permit process is more protective for the town, allows more control for the town.
So that, 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 that control is exercised in the creation of the special permit and the, the definitions that go into it, essentially the text of this draft. And it, if it gets approved, for example, in this form, it essentially becomes as of right with respect to the developers. Now, yes or no?
As long, but they have to meet to a T each of the standards set forth in, in the code, yeah. It's, but once they meet those standards, then yes, there's, there's not as much discretion for whether to approve the, the project or not. The discretion lies in determining whether the application materials have, have met those standards.
So one way to look at it is the more control, the more definition there is to the language in here, the more security the town might have in the outcome.
Right, and obviously, in setting the standards, the town board has, has ultimate legislative discretion.
Standards is a loose term. What is, I mean, the, the, at least the way I'm interpreting it. Like, are there, do the standards mean specific criteria? Like.
The standards, as I'm referring to them, are the, the things set forth in the, the proposed local law. So for example, the, the parking requirements, the the dwelling unit styles, that the, the, the basic meat of that local law that's in front of you.
Right, so just as a matter of, of, of just information, would it be, on the other hand, to the town's advantage to have the language less specific so that there is more, as the process goes through, there's more opportunity for the town to shape the project?
In a certain regard, yes. Sometimes that, that tool to have more discretionary language is, is useful, yes.
Thank you.
I, I would say that, you know, ultimately, when, when we look at this project in, in the legislation, ultimately, there are two things that are going on. We have a lot of cover over these two things, but the two things are a request for an initial floor of height and, and a waiver of our standard parking requirements. That's all this is really about. All this other stuff about buildings and how it looks and this kind of stuff, it's kinda like, it's cover for what's really going on. And, and to Tom's point, to the extent that we make it very specific for this project, we make it perhaps more of a burden for someone else, the other, the other lot in this, in this one, in this one area. So I, I think it, ultimately, the bottom line is, it's gonna be, you know, the policy that the town wants to take in terms of the extra floor and, and, and figuring out this parking. All this other stuff, I mean, these are things that are great, fantastic, great designs, wonderful designs, very interesting. I, I think it's fantastic, but it's cover for what's really going on here. And this is all a request to fit this in economically so it works, which we hope it does, in a way that I need to have four floors, and you guys gotta figure out a way, we gotta figure out a way to make the parking work, to do what we, what we wanna do here. So that's what this is all about. I mean, this is, so, I mean, and, and that's really the policy here.
I have never, it's not been demonstrated that they need four floors to make this work. I mean, then there's no demonstration. I'm not saying that you necessarily have to demonstrate it.
I'm just saying that's what's going on, I think, which is fine.
No, it's, I, I.
Absolutely wanna hear about it, once these.
Worked with. Yes, you wanna hear about it, definitely. You need to know, I think the town board needs to know about it to, to make the determination about the four floors, because it's a big deal, right? Very big deal. But I also, I have never in life, not never, but it's very rare to meet somebody making an investment, a piece of property, and not do everything they can to get the maximum return on it. That's how you do investments everywhere in life, at least financial investments everywhere in life. So it's not surprising that four stories is on the table, you know, I would probably want to do the same thing. And so I don't think that it's a, it's a given that four stories is economically necessary because there are three-story projects going up all over around us, residential projects going on, being built right now, having, having just been completed, there's, that are going on in towns around us everywhere. Maybe, probably because they don't allow four stories. I'm not in on the details of all those developments in all those towns, but it's not a given that in this marketplace that you have to have four stories to make it go. But I just wanted to say that.
Yeah. Yeah, and, I mean, frankly, I hope we don't get into that argument of, is four stories necessary to, to, it's just, you know, with the, with the town board, I prefer not to get into that discussion because I, I think that, that, that's just, ends up with us circling the drain all the, but, Bob, your, 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 your point, that the two big asks here are an increase in height and reduction in parking, I think is exactly right. That's what I was trying to get at, like, wha- what is being asked of us? Is this the right mechanism to do that? I think we have already raised a bunch of legitimate questions. If this may or may not be the right mechanism, or at least the right form for it. I'm eager to see, have the conversation with the town board. I, it's getting late. So I just wanna repeat again how much I love the proposal, and I want it to be successful. And so there will be obviously lots of conversations. You have done your homework. I understand why you, you've made the choice, a lot of the choices that you've made, especially if you've done the homework on the, you know, the form-based code conversation that has happened in this town over the last couple of years. So I get it, the, you know, impact on the, on the, on the, or as little impact as possible on, on, on the school system and all that. But eager to see where this goes.
Thanks for your attention.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Have a great holidays, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an agenda item where we have a discussion ourselves. Does anyone want to, does anyone wanna further discuss the legislation? Cuz that was a separate item on the agenda. It was kinda bland. If not, fine.
So again, so what's our next step with that?
What's next?
Well, the next step is the town board will be looking for some sort of input from us, and it's supposed to be delivered by January fifteen, that's a cutoff date. I would propose that we look at this and discuss it at our next meeting, which will be the first meeting in January, and look at the legislation. We've, we've, we've seen a fantastic presentation here, but I think we really have to delve into the legislation and the policy behind the legislation. More than that, the policy of the legislation as, as an approach.
It's two separate questions.
It really is. I mean, I, from my own personal standpoint, I hope the parking and I hope the, the height and the two big asks, I hope it works. You know, and I think it would be a really great project. I'm really cautious about this commercial retail and diner stuff, but we'll see what the the parking shows.
Well, if we're, if we're already at the point of weighing in, whether we like the project or not, it seems to me it's premature because I, I, I mean, there's not, from my perspective, there hasn't been enough back and forth to really get into it because there's just. Elad loves it, I, I, Elad loves it, and that's great, you know, but what I just said to him was, well, I don't hate it. So.
That's an inside joke, sorry.
It is an inside joke.
Not, not a very good one, but.
But that's all we got.
Yeah.
So.
I like your idea that, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, four stories, particularly if a smaller project minimizes the potential parking issues. So that's my two cents. I have to go, unfortunately. I have some other things I must do before everybody goes to bed here.
So just.
Yeah, happy holiday.
So just real quickly, just so you, you know where I'm coming from. I, I clearly, I think there's a problem with, with the legislation, but.
Yeah.
Design, I think parking is a, is a big problem. I think four stories really, really needs to be looked at. I don't think, for me, I don't think that's a slam dunk to the town. I understand the architecture, I understand the style, construction, technology, I think, is fabulous. I love it. I think it's, you know, we need more of that, and that's a big plus, I believe. I am, however, concerned about the massing of the project on the street. I'm concerned about the presentation of the size of this project on North King, the way it presents itself as a project. It presents itself as a project to be less as sort of a, a Hamlet Street environment. And those are the kinds of things that are tough to get over, given where you are right now, and maybe they don't need to be to get over, but I, from my perspective, there's a lot of work to do, and we're ready to do it with you. And I think we'll, you know, we'll get something out of it, I'm sure, cuz we all want something to happen there. And you guys seem to be, you know, the right team members to do it, so I think it'd be great.
We don't have to.
I mean, I, I, I'd like to definitely read the parking study. You know, I, you know, I definitely wanna see the studies that you guys have put together. At the end of the day, this is a discussion we've been having forever. If we're looking at a certain amount of density, we are going to see some bug there, and we're gonna have to think about it. I thought it was architecturally, it is pretty sensitive. I mean, it is sensitively done. I could not have, I mean, I'm sure we could have figured out the good designs on that lot, but I, I like what I saw as far as that is concerned. All of the, the vehicle of the policymaking is important to us, and that is all something we would, we would need to get behind for sure, and we would have continued discussions because we don't wanna set a precedent that's going to then impact multiple other things. But it's good to understand where you're coming from in making the site work as well, because we all care about that, so.
Okay, great. Sorry to keep you having a car running, but. Good night.
Just to, you know, I love the concept. I'm not ready to vote yes on anything, just to be clear.
Yeah.
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 Me too.
Yeah, because I think to Tom's point, I don't think it's just a matter of taste, but I think, you know, the fourth story and the extra amount of people, if you're gonna keep the commercial, maybe that's, something has to be sacrificed to make something more reasonable to park. Although I, I agree with you, Elad. To me, the one point three to one is not that big of a lift on residential. To me, the, the real concern is commercial.
And even, you know, it's like, we don't have to enter the parking discussion. I'll, I'll leave it.
I was gonna say, at the end of the day, if you want people there, and that's what we were saying, right? You want people to walk in the street, you want that street to be lively and activated. It has an impact. What you do in there is going to have impact.
If you don't have parking, you don't have people.
I, I, I hear your point completely, Tom.
So I'm less concerned about the negative impact of insufficient parking on the residential, because if the units are vacant, so be it, the residential units. I'm more concerned about the negative impact of insufficient parking on the commercial, because then we have a dead street and a failed project from, from the town's perspective.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I wanna make sure we get it right, but conceptually, this is all the things that we have talked about that, that certainly get me excited about where the future of this town can be. But we will have those discussions. I'm eager to have them with the town board also, that the makeup of the board is, is, has shifted
Keep changing.
A little bit since last we engaged with them, and so, I mean, it will continue to change, I think, right? This, this is gonna take some several conversations and time, and, and I think, you know, one of you said that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Great. All right, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
You're closing the meeting?
Hi.
Could I just say like three minutes of?
Sure.
Why I came here?
Sure.
Thank you for coming.
Well, we never voted on it. Vote on it. Okay, voting.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay. Don't wanna break any rules. So.
Please state your name.
Tom Callish, I live at forty-eight Overlook Road. I, I came here in the early summer. I mean, I promise this will be brief. A neighbor situation, there was a lot of filming and photo shoots, and you guys were talking about changing whatever the law, the rule was about photo shoots, cuz these are major photo shoots, not small photo shoots. And I was not here, I was traveling in October and November, and you, you told me that you would be.
Is that the town board?
It's the town board, it's not this board.
I'm sorry, isn't it the third Tuesday of the month right now?
It, it is, it is, and typically.
You're telling me I sat through that thing for two hours to get to the Roy Place?
Yes, you did.
And it truly is a wonderful Christmas. Happy holidays. So was it, when, when?
We have not been in any photo shoots.
The town board typically meets on every Tuesday night, but because it's the holidays, they did not meet this Tuesday.
You mean, every Tuesday of the month?
Every other.
But they, 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 yes, every other. And so their first meeting is January sixth, I think, or January third?
I, I have the date. I wanna thank you all for giving me the minutes to embarrass myself.
We can strike it from the beginning.
I like this project. I know a lot about sustainability. I like the project. But it ain't gonna look good.
We have a vote now on the motion.
We're, we're only here because we have to. I actually learned a little bit tonight, so it wasn't for nothing.
So can I make the motion? Al Dead made the second? On paper?
Yes.
Everyone have a happy, wonderful, peaceful and healthy holiday.
Thank you, you too.
Bye-bye.